Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Primo Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guetta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bang.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Vice Mayor, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Puttwin and Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally-recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation of Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to also congratulate the Sacramento State Hornets. Thirty-four to six opener win against the Texas A&amp;M Commerce. California beating Texas there, so a big round of applause and congratulations to the home opener of the Sacramento State Hornets. Stingers up. Thank you, Coach Thompson.
That is very worthy to support our Hornets here. All right, let us begin this evening. Let me welcome everybody, first of all, my colleagues, the city staff, most importantly, the members of the public who are both in the chambers and also watching either on television or online. We begin tonight with several special presentations. And the first one, if I may, I get the opportunity to present the Community Development Department Employee of the Year, Stephanie Lou. Where is Stephanie? Wow, come on up, Stephanie. So, Mr. Pace, why don't you come on up and talk a little bit about this important honor? And then, I know that each year your department selects an employee of the year from either the building, planning, code enforcement, animal control, or administrative divisions. This year is Stephanie Lou, who's right here, an assistant planner who works directly with our residents, the developers and business owners at our public counter. I mean, what's more important than the first person that you meet when you're seeking to do business with the city? You are here because you're obviously valued not just by your department, but by your entire city government, the city council, and the city. And so, Tom Pace, I'll turn it over to you and to acknowledge Stephanie further.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Tom Pace, Director of Community Development. It's my pleasure to recognize and acknowledge our Employee of the Year in the Community Development Department. We actually have an Employee of the Month as part of our employee recognition program each month. And then amongst the employees of the month from the preceding year, we select one of them as Employee of the Year. And so, it's a great pleasure to acknowledge Stephanie here as our Employee of the Year this year. She's an outstanding employee. As the mayor mentioned, she's an assistant planner and she works at the permit services counter and assists customers who need help with zoning questions or the beginning of the process to obtain a building permit or other planning approvals that they might need. And she's been acknowledged by her coworkers, and I have some notes here that I've taken. These come really from comments made by her coworkers in nominating her to this honor. And, you know, she's known for being very helpful in assisting customers in person as well as online. She has built a great rapport with staff and customers since she's been with the Community Development Department. She has a positive attitude and continually works to find solutions to our customers' problems. Often, she's the go-to person for questions or for help in solving an issue. She goes above and beyond in her customer service. She's thorough in obtaining information to help customers with their projects and follows up to ensure that their questions are answered. She handles difficult interactions with customers with exceptional professionalism, and she responds to them in a timely and constructive manner. As a coworker, she's a great team player and constantly helps when needed. She always volunteers to do extra assignments to help better the team. She's always looking for ways to improve the customer service experience by making the city processes and services more understandable, such as providing more useful information on the planning website. And finally, she's very organized, which allows her to meet all of these goals without delay. So, I'm really very appreciative of the work that you do, Stephanie. Thank you so much. I have a certificate here that we have prepared in our department, and it recognizes her as Employee of the Year. And...
Thank you.
Someone stick the photo there. Mayor, if it's all right, maybe we can just come up there and have a quick photo.
We can, except we have many questions for Stephanie.
All right, yes, and I should say also, I'll give Stephanie a chance to say a few words.
Yes, go ahead. I want to know, what is the key to being a great public servant?
Listening.
Very good.
And, yeah, that's basically it, just making sure that everyone feels like they're heard. But I just want to thank everyone at council for the special presentation to Tom, Candace, and Greg for the recognition, and then Kevin and Thomas and Pam for just the endless support and guidance, and then my friends and family.
Look at that.
Thank you for supporting me.
Introduce them.
I love you guys.
Introduce them, please.
This is my mom, Marilyn, my dad, Greg, my fiancee, Emily, her grandparents, Kelly and Larry, and then my friends Laura, Tyler, Zach, Kristen, and Jeremy.
Yes! Should be proud. Very proud.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, let's take the picture. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, it's great. Come on. All right, we do have one more special presentation. I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Bang for recognizing Curtis J. Richards.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And I will be doing this with Coach, Councilmember Rick Jennings as well. Today, I have the honor to present an obit resolution to honor and celebrate a true public servant who we lost recently, Curtis Jamal Richards, a native of Meadowview Park community. He was a remarkable individual who dedicated his life to serving South Sacramento and the Sacramento region with unwavering commitment and dedication. Coach Curtis, as the youth called him, served his community as a sports coach with the Sacramento Raiders, Sheldon Junior Husky, the Airport Little League, and the National Junior Basketball. Coach Curtis was always putting others before himself. You know, one of the best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in service to others. And Coach Curtis found himself in service, and in doing so, he continues to be an inspiration to all of us, and especially all the young people that he mentored. So today, Mayor, our council would like to present a resolution to his family, really to recognize his legacy and the work that he's done in South Sacramento. But before I ask his incredible wife to come up, Renisha Richards, to come up to say a few words, I'd like to also share the mic with our coach, Coach Jennings, as well, to read a bit from the obit resolution.
Thank you so much. I run an organization called the Center for Fathers and Families. And what was remarkable about Curtis Richards was that he was a devoted father, a father who was always present in his children's lives, but not only in his children's lives, but in the lives of every child that crossed his path. He was a father figure to them as well. He was known, as you say, as Coach Curtis and natural-born leader. And that's why all the kids wanted to follow behind him, because he was just a natural-born leader. And as a young kid playing football growing up, I always wanted to be just like my coach. I know they wanted to be just like their coach as well. And he and I crossed paths from the standpoint that I got a chance to play with the Oakland Raiders. He coached the Sacramento Raiders right here in Sacramento. So, I just feel like we were brothers in a sense. And just really loved his life, his legacy, the impact that he made, the differences that he made in the lives of others. And he was always present and always accounted for. So, I just want to let the family know that we will miss him.
Yes. Ms. Renisha Richards, would you and your entire family like to come up and say a few words? Please come up, the entire family. Don't be shy, come up, come up.
My name is Renisha Richards. I'm going to keep it short and sweet, but I do want to thank you all for honoring my husband and for the work that he's done in the community. He strived on motivating and encouraging our youth to do better and be better. I hope he continues to inspire all those that he did touch. I'm thankful for the work that he did, and it didn't go unnoticed, because that's why we're here today. Again, I just want to thank you all for honoring him. This is a true blessing, so thank you very much.
Oh, I think they wanted to say, I want to make sure.
Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Siwana. I'm the daughter, his only daughter. And I just want to thank you guys as well for just being able to honor our dad and just allowing his, you know, everything that he did to be... Thank you for saying it in here, sorry, in short words. I'm so nervous. Thank you.
You're doing great.
You're doing great saying.
What's going on? How are you guys doing?
Good.
My name is Caleb Richards. I'm his youngest son. I want to take the time to thank you all for just recognizing my dad here at the city hall. It means a lot. And like she said, my dad, he was just a selfless individual who helped the community. He instilled that into me, that's why I do what I do today.
What do you do?
I serve as an officer for Sacramento County probation. So, just continuing to support positive change, that's all we're looking to do.
You know... Your dad's life is another of many examples where that show you don't have to have a title to be a leader and to make a great impact. Thank you. Go, go.
My name is Curtis Richards, and I want to thank you guys for my dad. I know up there, he's smiling, he's pretty proud, and he's also saying thank you. Always looking over me, telling me what to do, and make sure I take care of my family as well. He's always there to turn my life around. And I appreciate what you guys are doing for him, for his vaccine, thank you.
Want to take a picture again, councilman?
We do, we do, please.
Hello, Sacramento.
Why don't you guys go ahead?
Hi, Sacramento. I'm Jamal's brother, Kyle. I would like to thank the whole Sacramento for acknowledging Jamal. He was a great individual beyond his means, started from nothing and created an amazing thing. His legacy is one to really recognize. And Mayor, I think we should paint his face in that Meadowview community over there, because he represented the community not only from an upper level, but he even represented it on a lower level. He knew what was going on in Sacramento, and he was a pillar in the community. You know, he gave his heart, he was a sincere individual, and he had a lot of dignity, a lot of longevity, and a lot of people that respected him beyond his years. In 47 years, Jamal was amazing. I was with him from the gate. I watched him build his nonprofit organizations. I watched him get involved in the community in Meadowview. I watched him create a Pop Warner team, which helped kids who were, you know, and he even gave some of the kids opportunities who didn't have money. He just said, "Come on, we want you guys to be safe in this community and thrive and be the best you can for Sacramento." So Jamal is everything, and he meant everything to all of us. And I'm glad the city of Sacramento was honoring him, and I know he looking at me right now, because we really took that ride. And thank you guys for honoring my brother, the city of Sacramento, the city council. You guys are great, and he was an honorable man. Thank you.
I also wanted to thank you guys too as well. I'm his younger cousin, and I just was able to learn a lot from him and see how to be a pillar to the community and how to learn how to give back to my community. And so, for that, I thank him, and I thank you guys too as well for acknowledging that.
Thank you. Beautiful. Come on up, everybody.
Yeah, we want to take a group picture with you. We want to give you the resolution and honor your husband and your father.
All right, members, we now move to the consent calendar, items one through 20. Are there items that members would like to be voted on separately or discussed separately? I see Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item one for a separate discussion and vote. And then I have comments on item four and 18.
Hold on, four. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you, Mayor. Very excited about item number 20. I just want to say a few, make a few comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Just want to echo a couple comments on 20.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I was going to also comment on item number one and also congratulate the work on item number 20.
So you want to speak on item one?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's already been pulled for a separate vote. Okay. All right, let's just go through the line here. Let's take item one first, and again, we'll have a separate motion on one, but let's just go through for comments on all of them.
Thank you. And I know members of the public have signed up to speak on this.
Yeah, that's right. I just think let the members...
Okay, no, and they'll do much better job than I will in terms of detail, because I see Kate standing up already. The reason I pulled this item is because, and first I want to thank the community members. This is the deferred area mayor that's like to be District Four in your area right now. But they literally went out and surveyed all of the trees and all of the work that was to be done and really identified the trees that were small enough that planting new trees would really make sense and the trees that they thought might be savable, salvageable. So there are three trees specifically that they are asking for us to try to accommodate in the design of the plan, tree 20, tree 86, and 87. They've put forward some ideas as to how the trail might be slightly adjusted in order to accommodate keeping these trees, some of which are really, really large trees that would take years, if not decades, for us to regrow. So I wanted to ask staff for their thoughts and opinions on that, as well as maybe potentially amend the motion for direction on those items, so... I don't know if we want to take that up now or...
That's okay.
Philia, I usually like to give you more of a heads up on this and not put you on the spotlight.
You won't have that. Let's have a Philia come up. Why don't you come up and answer the question? That's fine, we'll go one at a time.
So, Mayor, Councilwoman Howard, Philia Avalos, Engineering Services Division Manager. And I, we have looked at the project. I think what's on the table now on the council report is just one tree. It's not the three trees that the public is concerned about.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to make that distinction.
Okay. So it's possible still in future steps?
So, we'll look at it. I'll ask the engineer of design to look at it and see if there could be an adjustment made. But those trees were not covered under the city permit. They're under the environmental document, and they're in the county jurisdiction.
Okay, but it would be potential plans to our trail that we could make to try to not need those trees?
Yes, we'll look into it, and we can get back to your office, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Philia. And, I mean, it's just one of those things, we talked, we actually, just a couple meetings ago, we were talking about our climate action plan and how important our urban tree canopy is. So happy to move forward with this item with that direction and request of staff to please look into making the adjustments suggested on the trail so that we could accommodate those three trees that are nice and senior and mature and that we don't want to lose if we can.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you had a comment on one as well.
Yeah, no, it was the same line of questioning, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, even after the public comment, if there's any additional information on that, but I concur, if you can get back to my office on that. And again, I think it's important that we move forward. I mean, that trail for a long time, if, you know, it was even difficult to walk on and jog on sometimes. So now that we have ADA access to it, it's going to be a great amenity, but having as much shade as possible is even better.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to the next items. We're going to hear the public testimony, and then we'll take motions separately, which is fine. Item four, Councilmember Valenzuela again.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief comment. This is also in the deferred area, but a lot of stuff started during that brief time period when we thought District Four was immediate, and then it wasn't immediate. And one of the things that happened was a really tragic incident in front of Phoebe Hurst Elementary that took the life of a mother on her way to pick up her children from school. And so, I just couldn't let this professional services agreement pass without thanking the city staff for working so quickly. I mean, the whole Public Works team were on those calls with the principal and the school site staff the next, like, week, talking about what the status of the plans was, digging up plans, adjusting estimates so that we could make the ask of the state for this money, and the state came through with the money. And so, I just couldn't let this go without saying it's such an unfortunate tragedy that a death occurred before these improvements are occurring now. But I'm just glad that they're happening and really want to thank everybody, including Assemblymember McCarty, who helped identify this funding and the city team for all they did to move these improvements forward as quickly as we can. And hopefully, we'll save future lives by making that street a lot safer.
At 18, and you're up for that one as well.
I got all of them.
Go right ahead.
Another one I couldn't let pass, because it's a community garden. And if I had, like, one of the random constituent requests I get is always like, "We want more gardens." And I didn't want this moment to pass without people recognizing that the city, in partnership with the school district, has opened a new garden next to Leotada Floyd, right in between the CB Circle, New Halvisha Community, and the Mill. We are voting to name this garden the Healthy Roots Community Garden, which is really special, because actually the students at Leotada picked this name, and it was then voted on by residents of CB Circle, New Halvisha, and the Mill as the name they wanted. And it's significant, not just because of the vegetables and the roots that will be grown there, but because this garden is actually in the spot of the original community garden that was started by Leotada Floyd, who the school is now named after. And there are a lot of folks who grew up in that neighborhood who have a lot of really positive associated memories with that space and what it offered when Leotada was here. So, just really excited that we're kind of returning it to the community in the form of this garden and naming it after something that the kids and the community feel is really important. So we're looking forward to partnering with those gardeners and the school, and the Food Literacy Center is right behind it and their farm. So really trying to make this a hub for the kids to learn how to grow their food and to celebrate their culture through food. So I'm really excited to see this step happen. And I want to thank my team, especially my district director, Michaela Taylor, for all the work she's done to kind of get the process to this point, so... Exciting, positive thing on the agenda, Mayor. I'm going to come up with all of them. Yeah.
All good. Item 20, move to item 20. Go ahead, Councilmember Laloie.
If we're going with exciting items on the agenda tonight, I think item number 20, it's a home run for me. Let me just say a few things. First and foremost, I want to thank Denise Mulvey, Ginger Webgraph, and Economic Development. Truly, truly, I appreciate your commitment and hard work to make this happen. I can't just pass on and not to thank Jennifer Gore from City Attorney's Office, when we didn't think there's enough time for her to review it. And she said, "We'll make the time, we'll make sure we get it done." So thank you so much to Jennifer. And of course, Veronica Smith from my staff, who literally worked on this around the clock with the team to make sure we're here today. As many of you know, District Two, small business and nonprofit organization, provide a crucial service to North Sacramento residents. And organizations that are being awarded these first round of North Sacramento Investment Initiative dollars represent a wide array of direct and supportive programs in our community, from providing apprenticeship and workforce training opportunities, entrepreneurship mentoring, and space for startup retail businesses, to innovative youth educations and programming. So really, my hat is off to our great nonprofits that are, I see a few faces here. So thank you very much for being here today. You know, during the pandemic, our business community and nonprofit service organizations were hit extremely hard. Yet, they were forced to do so much with much more less sources. But that's nothing new for District Two, you know. I'm so proud, representing District, that no matter how hard the wind hits, we still get up. Not only we take care of ourselves, but we lend a helping hand out there too. The overcharging goal of North Sacramento Investment Initiative is to provide our community the critically important support they need as they continue to recover from the effect of COVID crisis. This is not only includes the people directly, but the businesses and organizations that support the people in our community. The people are critical to strengthening our business corridor and improving our neighborhoods. I look forward to seeing the impact of these initial investments, and we look forward to opening round two of facade and issuing calls for proposal for the transmorgue investment opportunities. This is a very, this is a great day for me, Mayor. And first, I want to thank you for, you know, allocating these funds from the ARPA for this cause. And very excited about what's coming to our district. This is just the very beginning. We have close to $500 million of private investment that's coming into our business corridor. We're in talks, as of right now, to bring a national gem into our district. So I think things are moving in the right path. I'm very excited. And of course, this tonight is the icing on the cake. So I want to thank everyone that were involved with this process, and I want to thank all the organizations that are going to participate in this and making our district great and wonderful. So thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kaplan, then I want to make a couple comments about this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Laloie. District Two, historically under-invested area, but this where ARPA funding is going to go, this isn't just District Two. This is a lot of north of the river. I mean, you see, in Natomas, we have Roberts Family Development Center. Freedom School is at our Natomas schools, and the Capital College and Career Academy. Some of our Natomas kids go to it, but this is... But this is also an academy that is going to strengthen the building trades, is training the next generation. When we look at investing local, this is not just investing in, while I did love the furniture store that used to be there, you know, investing in the youth and the future generations. This is a really well-thought-out plan. So thank you for your leadership, Councilmember Luloy, because it's really affecting small businesses and businesses that also support the rest of the city of Sacramento and making a difference on the equity level for District Two.
Thank you. Mayor Protem and Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just keep it short. I just wanted to take this time to give kudos to Councilmember Luloy for his leadership and really fighting hard for District Two. I know up there, so many of our communities are underserved and you're fighting tooth and nail to get them resources. And I think this is a huge win for the community. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the rest of the $4 million get rolled out to District Two. And just really wanted to take this time to say thank you to you for your leadership and your staff, your chief of staff, and all of our city staff that worked incredibly hard to get these dollars out. I know we had voted on this almost two years ago. And finally, we are starting to see the dollars roll out to our communities because the needs are so dire. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to you. And then the other piece, I also just wanted to add, I think that was the last piece I wanted. There was one more piece that I wanted to add. I'll come back to that. There was one more piece. Oh, I remember now. I'm speaking about this in particular and holding up District Two because when I think about equity, this is about equity in the making, right? Because when District Two does well, when Del Paso Heights does well, all of our district, the entire city, does well. And that's the reason why I think this council, when it was budget time, we all committed to ensuring that those dollars went to your district. And so kudos to you for your leadership because if you didn't make that ask, I don't think it would have happened. And so, but this is really equity in action, right? It's not coming to District Eight. It's not going to D4. But we know that if we're able to uplift our babies and our families in D2, all of us will do better. And so congratulations, Councilmember Luloy.
Excellent. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to also congratulate, you know, my colleague here and also board member of the Air Quality Management District, another trustee there, and the work there that's being done with Green Tech for a mobility hub, where we have hydrogen vehicles being used there. The opportunity for youth to look at how we can look at engineering for the future and them actually using it. I mean, this is exactly the, it's not enough just to talk about how we're going to improve our air quality and address our environmental challenges, but actually the investment there. So that's just one of it. And obviously, you know, Roberts Family Development Center consistently being there and also the Capital Career College. It's about upskilling our community and giving paths for the future of their families. So I'm excited to also support this project here. Thank you for that, for championing that. Mr. Mayor, once this is done, I forgot, I wanted to comment on item number four and I mentioned it, but I'll leave it here. I wanted to go back on it. Sorry.
Okay, no worries. I just want to congratulate you too, Councilmember Luloy, and great work. And you've worked really hard with your community and you have really thought strategically about how to invest in the physical infrastructure, the human infrastructure, the investments, you know, to organizations like Roberts, I think is really important. The investment in the charter school is really crucial. That's pathways for, you know, young people from all our neighborhoods to gain careers in the trades. And so I do want to, in the broader context, it is important. I appreciate the thank you. But, you know, a lot of folks have said, what happened to Measure U, right? You hear that a lot. What happened to Measure U? Didn't go into the neighborhoods. Not true. Really, between the Measure U, the additional half cent, and what we deliberately chose to do through ARPA and through the CARES funding, we have had an investment strategy in our commercial corridors backed up by real money that we've never seen before, at least since redevelopment had its heyday. And we have established a pattern and a trend. Now, it's true this year that we're taking the resources we have, we're putting it into our city workforce and into our city organization. We're proud of that because it always has to be a balance. But we took real money that could have gone anywhere and we've put it into economic development, inclusive economic development in our commercial quarters. Remember, it's not only Northgate, excuse me, it's not only North Sacramento and Del Paso, it's in Del Paso Boulevard, it's also Northgate Boulevard. We've had similar investment strategies in other parts of the city, Stockton Boulevard, for example. And so this work must continue. The one question I have, if I might, just for clarity, there's still several million dollars left of the allocation. And so what is the process by which you are going to allocate those additional resources? And what is the timing of those allocations?
Great question, Mr. Mayor. So the process is going to be very simplified. We're going to roll out State Two by probably first week of next month. And we're asking our nonprofit and businesses within our community to actually come in and apply for a certain amount of funds and let us know how it's going to impact the community and the neighbors and the businesses. So we're going to fast-track this to get it out there as soon as possible. Our goal is to have the amount left completely distributed, hopefully before the end of the year, before Christmas.
Okay. I think that's helpful.
Also, if I may, I see Darrell Roberts here. I want to thank...
I mentioned him, yeah.
Darrell Roberts, really for what he does with our youth in our community. I had the privilege of attending a few of his summer session programs. And I was so impressed to see anywhere between 300 to 400 youngsters out there. And what was even more amazing is the instructors that were also in their, what, early to mid-20s? And that energy that they had, and then they were spending time with these students was absolutely amazing. And, you know, organization like his, I'm hoping that in future, they would be recognized by the city and especially with some of the funding that we have available for programs throughout the city that he can also participate with an ease. And I see Kevin Dobbs is here as well. I want to thank him for the great step that he's taken in bringing that charter school, which is very important. He's actually providing a path for the youth to not only get through college, but also learn what to do with their hands and recognize that not everybody needs a four-year college, that actually in the trades, you can easily go these days and graduate with $100,000, $150,000 income, which is pretty exciting. Because I always tell, my wife is a dentist. And when she does a root canal or a cavity and she gets all excited, I remind her that the hour that she spends on that, that, you know, if there was a carpenter or a plumber, that that hour, they make double of what she makes as, you know, with doing that cavity. So we kind of walked away from the trades and we need to recognize that it is not our future. So having that charter school in our district, it's a huge plus. And hopefully our surrounding districts can advertise for it too and really show our kids that there is alternative to a four-year degree. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Councilmember Luloy. Councilmember Talamontis on this item.
Councilmember Luloy, I know I asked you, but I figured I'd put it on the record. I just want to make sure that the funding that we're allocating here is not being taken away from the library that we set aside for the library in Sacramento. Correct?
Absolutely correct. There is no way that funding is going to be touched. That place is spoken for. And if anybody decides to even touch a dollar on that, I will chain myself.
Okay, I just want to make sure. As before reading the newspaper, the money has been allocated. So I just want to make sure that it's on the record. Thank you.
What newspaper was that?
Well, there's been a bunch of listening sessions for the last three years on which building to get.
Well, the building has been. We got the building.
And everything.
And hopefully we will start the TI on that much sooner than later. Again, I know that from Economic Development and all the city staff are working on that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Were you going to declare something else? Yes.
And then I will ask for it to be pulled off so I can take a different, to not be on the consent calendar.
I think on item 20?
Item 20, yeah.
I think we can just reflect if you want to state for the record that you're going to abstain from 20.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. So for the record, I abstain on item 20.
Okay. Very good. All right. So let's take then, give me just a second here, a motion on item one. Excuse me. Oh, we do have a public comment. I'm sorry. Yes. Go, go. How many do we have?
Thank you, Mayor. I have six speakers in chambers and four online. Just wanted to remind members of the public who wish to address the council should complete the speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. If you want to speak on an agenda item, when the item begins, if you're in chambers, fill out a speaker slip and you're in Zoom, raise your hand. We're currently on the consent calendar. After the first speaker, we will no longer expect speaker slips and the raise hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. You'll have two minutes to address the council. So that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. Council rules and procedure outline decorum expected in chambers can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room. It is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer requested a person cease disruptive conduct and have not immediately stopped. The presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. My first speaker is Kate Riley. Then Daniel Patauski, then Ayesha White.
Hi. My name's Kate Riley. I am represented by Mayor Steinberg officially. I'm in District Four and I'm with Friends for Paradise Beach, of Paradise Beach. We're working on enhancing that segment of this American River between the Business Eighty Bridge and the Eighth Street Bridge. And we're really glad, thank you so much, Councilmember Valenzuela, for bringing it off the agenda, consent agenda, so we could have some buy-in from the staff. That's great. We have one other thing we're asking for besides saving those three trees, one of which is a huge native cottonwood, is we are, in addition, we're asking the city to commit to planting native shade trees that will provide shade to the trail. Because what has happened out there in that River Park segment, the Paradise Beach segment, is we've lost at least half of our canopy trees because of the projects, which were very necessary projects. The Army Corps project and also the Caltrans project have removed a lot of the shade trees there. We believe that people who are going to use that trail want to have shade. They don't want to be driving, riding their bikes or walking down a barren pathway. So we're hoping additionally that the city can commit to actually planting large native canopy trees along the trail. So thank you very much. And I think Dan Puskowski is coming next. Thank you.
Next speaker is Daniel Patauski, then Ayesha White.
Overhead, please. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Manager and City Clerk, Dan Puskowski. I'm a degree to Arbus, who's lived and worked in Sacramento for the past 33 years. I've worked for the city of Sacramento from 1990 to 2020. And if you can see on the overhead here, one of the trees we're asking, overhead?
Working on it.
Okay. Is a 50-inch diameter Fremont poplar. And I looked at it for the neighbors and you can put the trail on the other side. Like the reason why they wanted to take the tree out was it's only 10 feet from the toe of the levee. And, okay, here it is. It's only 10 feet from the toe of the levee. Well, if you go on the other side of the tree, there's enough space there. You can put the trail. Or you could actually split the trail around the tree. They do that, like in Davis, there was a pedestrian column for this overpass and they split the trail on the other side. So on this 50-inch diameter tree, I think it's possible to save this tree. Now, on the other two that we're asking for, these are two coast redwood trees. And what happened was there was a storm in January and the ramp is going up here. That's why they need to take it out. But the storm took out a couple of trees, like two 43-inch diameter trees. And so now you have this big space right there. So it might be possible to move the ramp over there. Now, I sent Anna Randolph, he's the Public Works Project Director, an email. And he was great on the Del Paso Trail or the Del Rio Trail because he saved the largest tree there, 43-inch diameter valley oak. And he just emailed me back, he had COVID. And so we're going to meet with him next Monday at 1:00. But this is where the other two trees are. So with the storm taking out those two, like 42-inch diameter trees, there should be opportunities to save these other two. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker on item 20 is Ayesha White. Then John Bellroyd, then Darrell Roberts.
Hi, my name is Ayesha White and I have Felicia Armelin with Escape Velocity with me. I'm the owner of the pop-up shop in Ardenford Mall. I wanted to speak to item number 20 and express my gratitude to Councilmember Sean Luloy, Mayor Steinberg, and remaining council and staff for this critical investment. We appreciate your dedication to promote economic recovery and the growth of underserved small businesses in District Two and beyond. We opened during COVID, well, we opened prior to COVID, but we have been heavily affected by COVID and so has the businesses that are within our network. And so we're just really excited for this because it's going to allow us to help aid in that recovery. Since being in business prior to COVID, we've noticed what they need. We've done research and development and we've come up with a plan to help aid in the recovery as well. So thank you so much.
Next speaker is John. Is it Bell Perio? Following John is Darrell Roberts, then Kevin Dobson.
All right. Is there any way I can let Kevin Dobson speak before me? He's a director. I'm speaking for the CCA.
I do call people up in the order they turn.
Okay, that's fine. Well, thank you, Mayor, council members, staff. My name is John Bell Perio. I'm a representative for the NorCal Carpenters and also a board of director for CCCA. Councilmember Luloy, I just want to thank you and we greatly appreciate all the work that you've done to help us out. This school is a grassroots school. Kevin rounded up people that could help donate. There's no venture capital. There's no financing. There's no, you know, investors here. This is organizations, labor organizations, contractors, people in the community that came together and said, we believe in your vision. We believe in your passion. We believe in what you want to do to help the underserved youth in the Sacramento region and create an education system that serves those that the normal education system, no slant to the normal public education system, but some kids just aren't served well in that system. And so this has established a system that is going to address the needs of those children as well as give them an opportunity to career in the trades. We have a direct higher end of the apprenticeships once they graduate. So again, thank you so much, but the work's not done. Again, you know, there is no investors, no venture capitalists. So any help that the city can give us in the future is greatly appreciated. We welcome it. If anybody hasn't been there yet, please come out, see how excited these kids are, see what we're doing. It's amazing. We saw the mayor there at the ground break and you were there at the ribbon cutting. Want to thank you guys for coming out and showing your support. Come out and see what's happening today. Because there's amazing things happening in that school and it's going to transform that region in Sacramento as well as the greater Sacramento areas. It's a county-wide charter. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Darrell Roberts?
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Councilman Luloy. Thank you for making this possible. Other members of the council mentioned our name. We appreciate you. For the last 23 years, Tina and Darrell Roberts have been a part of the North Sacramento community. We personally invested in our community and feel honored tonight that the city is reinvesting in our organization as it once did. I'd like to thank you, Councilman Luloy, for what you did, how you thought through the process. During COVID, as you know, it was a tough time for all of us in our city, around the country, but in our city particularly. As an organization, we tried our best to be in spaces where others could not be, with staff, working with our families, providing food and other services. We've been an integral part of D2 for 23 years and we plan to be there for as long as I'm a part of Robert Fanduel and the Senate, which will not be forever though. Might as well tell you that. Want to thank the city auditor. It may sound real strange, but the city auditor strengthened our organization. You know, most nonprofits don't have a chance of figuring out how to do a better job. And I'll be honest with you, initially, it bothered me. Honestly, it pissed me off. But over time, it's strengthened our organization. It's made us better stewards of resource that we get. It made us more focused. And it gave a leader an opportunity to be re-energized and show what can happen for an organization that's supported by the city. I would encourage you in each of your districts to look at those community-based organizations that are giving you 100%. Support them. The challenges that were brought out for us by the city manager are challenges many nonprofits have. And trust me, if we had a... And trust me, if we had, if most of us were audited, we'd find the same problems that they had with Robert Fandrell and the Center three years ago. I would encourage you to invest in the nonprofit community because it has become an integral part of Sacramento.
Our next speaker is Kevin Dobson. Kevin Dobson, then Kevin Brom.
Everybody, thank you. Wanted to thank the Mayor, Councilmember Sean Luloli. My name's Kevin Dobson, the founder, executive director for Capital College and Career Academy. As noted, we're a countywide charter, a brand-new charter. In our initial freshman class, we have over 23 different zip codes being served, with the majority of them being served in the 95815 area code. Our school is about really growing the pie, serving those kids that are falling through the cracks in our traditional school systems and providing them with authentic pathways into both college and career. We're the only high school in Sacramento where students can go to Sac State, take college classes, participate in robust internships and job shadows that, again, lead into quality pathways upon graduating from our school. Wanted to also just point out that we, our construction project is a private development project, transformed an entire city block in North Sacramento. It was the largest union project since 1987, when light rail went in, in District Two, and the largest private construction project, union construction project in North Sacramento history. And we just feel incredibly appreciative to be able to have led those efforts, to see the infusion of life into Del Paso Boulevard, to see the beautification of a city block. And we look forward to partnering with the city of Sacramento as we talk about job shadows, internships. We see the city as a, as a real viable partner here. And beyond what we do as a charter school, we run monthly youth events. We host career fairs for adults. And so excited to continue that partnership, both with the city and some of the other nonprofits that we recognize today. So thank you.
Thank you for comments. Kevin Brom, and then I have four speakers online.
Good evening. I am Kevin Brown. I am the co-founder of People Working Together, to the mayor, to the city manager, to Mayor Protem, and to the councilpersons and Councilman Mr. Luloli. Thank you so very much. People Working Together's inception was 2014, shortly around the G1 build-out, in which we participated in the steering committee. And I reference that to say this, is that the other half of People Working Together, when we launched, was specifically pastors working together. We aggregated 51 African-American churches for the sole purpose of being able to go into these impoverished communities, utilize their facilities that were closed Monday through Saturday, and utilize it in a way for job readiness. The building trades at a particular time was our first partner and has been our only great partner as it relates to helping us with regard to job readiness and preparation. Many of the persons that were mentioned here, whether it be the Robertson or Green Tech and the Charter School, will be served as an incubator for us as relates to these young children matriculating down this continuum, at which time they would come into our state-recognized pre-apprenticeship and we could onboard them in, in a way that we could plug them in with the CWTA for the city of Sacramento, whether it be the GDS product, or Aggie Square Public, or the UC Davis Tower. And so, in essence, this is a great thing. It gives us an opportunity, because we did recognize years ago that construction was not for everyone. And it gives us an opportunity to retool and offer our computer information technology that we've established connectivity through HPE, where my wife actually serves as an executive, to help with the girls.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you again.
Next speaker is Sean Brackett. Sean Brackett.
Hello. Hello. Hello?
Please proceed.
I just wanted to say, I am so happy seeing everyone come together like this, especially the stuff happening with the school systems and that faggot hike mayor who's a baby.
Call in user one.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis and I'm calling on two items. Number 10 has to do with the Robertson Community Center restroom. That's been on the agenda for a long time on the itinerary. That should be done. It doesn't take long to, to repair a restroom on the size of the Robertson Center. I'm glad to see that. And part of that, I was impressed with the Del Paso Heights library roof. It's actually being repaired. And then number 20, that's something that I fought for. They were calling it the Del Paso Boulevard, Marysville Boulevard corridor, but it should have been the other way around, because that's where most of the work should go. I hope that it's very sincere about reaching out to businesses in Del Paso Heights, because we're getting calls from all over the city about our cheesecake business. I think it's imperative that Mr. Luloli and his staff reach out to us, because we're based there. And we have a manufacturer in Huntington Beach, Mayor, that we selected and they can flood the entire state of California with our pumpkin cheesecakes, which just went viral during Labor Day. That should inspire Mr. Luloli and his staff to reach out to us, because a computer cannot make a cheesecake. You have to hire people. So it's an instant win for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Eugene Goldstein.
Yes, Mayor, this is Eugene. I'm at 88 Oak Street, apartment 14. And I want to say thank you for cutting those racists off. We can't let them, we can't let them expose our Jewish plot to suck all the babies' penises.
Our following speaker is Jeff Harris, is the final speaker on the consent calendar.
Yeah, good evening, Council. Former Councilmember Jeff Harris. Those who've been on the council for a while will remember that I started working on the Dos, the Two Rivers Trail eight years ago. And Adam Randolph has been absolutely exemplary staff member in moving the project forward. It's difficult, because it's required coordination between the Army Corps and Caltrans as well. A very difficult project. It is fully funded, it's fully designed. And trying to revisit the design at this point, I think is probably not going to get a lot of traction. I would advise the council to listen to the wisdom of Adam Randolph, as he's poured his heart and soul into this project for many years. The council approved it long before the pandemic, and once again, it's fully funded. What I would say is that I agree with Kate Riley, that the mitigation money from the one city tree that is being lost for the ADA ramp for the Two Rivers Trail should be used for native trees and good shade cover canopies for the trail once it's built. So while I don't have an objection with going back to staff to talk about the design, understand that this has been years in the making, many years in the making. And the design is mature. Every tree has been considered and reconsidered numerous times. And I believe that we're pretty close to breaking ground on the Two Rivers Trail and it will be a tremendous amenity for the city. So thanks for your time and I look forward to getting this project moving. And frankly, as a person who lives in River Park, I look forward to using it, a lot. Have a good evening.
Thanks for calling, Councilmember.
Mayor, I have no more, Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
I do have Vice Mayor and Councilmember Valenzuela, I think, on item one, just to follow up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and second item one that was pulled off the consent calendar to move forward and then move the balance of the, the consent calendar.
Okay, there should be separate votes, but, so let's, it was.
I'm okay with it being one vote. I know I pulled it for a separate vote, but I think we've given the direction and staff has said.
Now you're okay with one vote. Move the consent calendar second.
With the note of the abstention from.
With the note of the abstention on item 20 by Councilmember Talamontes.
And briefly, just to bring her back up again, hi, Ophelia. Can you answer the question about the native tree, like, preference for planting? Have we thought at all? I know we've, again, I'm thinking back to the Climate Action Plan. I think that's in our sort of practice, is to try to plant native plants when we have the opportunity to plant something. But I just want to hear if that's been considered by the team in the mitigation.
Yes, for that, for this particular project, we've been working with the Army Corps, because they do have an active project there that's going to be there for a while. And so they are, they, they have reached out to our project manager, Adam Randolph, and told them that they would be planting the tree. So we'll, we'll give you more details on how many and what type of species they are when we get those.
Thank you so much, Ophelia. And yeah, again, thank you to the community for, I think, coming forward with some really common sense ideas and ways to make, potentially make the project even better than it already is. So happy to support moving forward tonight.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also, this also do a recognition, for a long time, we had a challenge with UP on this, but this was one where we were able to sit down with them and say, "We got to be able to move forward on it." And I do want to recognize Councilmember Harris for taking the, the tolerance for that, because I know it's, it's a challenge sometimes, working with a large organization like that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Great discussion. We move forward. So there's a motion, a second on the entire consent calendar with Councilmember Talamontes abstaining on item 20. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, passes. Thank you. Now we move to the lead discussion item, in fact, the only discussion item, but a major item on our agenda, and that is the follow-up to the 2023 OPSA, Office of Public Safety Accountability Audit Recommendations, and the Sacramento Police Department's response, as well as staffing requests, to establish a number of positions, both within the police department, but also within OPSA, to increase our capacity for oversight and response. Chief Lester.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us back tonight. So we all came together, the city attorney's office, OPSA, and the police department, and responded to the audit and the recommendations in one council report. I'll be speaking on behalf of the police department and then followed by OPSA, and then if the city attorney has any comments. So we'll kind of structure it like that, if that's, if that suits you. So we're really here to report back on the recommendations from the, the 20, the June 20th OPSA audit. And also, we were asked to come back with a timeline on when we could actually implement those recommendations. And I have some, some really good news to share. We're going to be presenting also a proposal to establish what we would call an internal compliance division and explain why that idea is really important, how I believe it will benefit not only our department and our city, but the community, for sure. In short, in, in order to make sure that we had a very thorough response, we assigned staff to this full-time after the June audit. I asked Captain Rudy Chan, who has a really extensive background in training and policy, as well as Lieutenant Clayton Buchanan, they're with us here tonight. They have both worked extensively on policy and have a lot of great relationships with our community as well. And they've been working on this full-time and I'm very proud of the work that they have done. So to get to the recommendations, and I'll have Lieutenant Buchanan give some in detail information on this, but we received each of the 19 individual recommendations. We carefully considered all of them to determine if they were already in practice, if they would need to be revised for implementation, or if they should be moved to adoption or incorporation to current policy pursuant to best practices. Of the 19 recommendations, we found that eight were already in place, or in practice, or were in the process of an update. 10, we know will be newly adopted in part or in full, and one is currently undergoing some research and consideration. We'll talk more about that, but that's the pretext stop policy. And there's some pending legislation that we're tracking very, very carefully to make sure that we're compliant with the law. And all, like I said, I'll have Lieutenant Buchanan go through these in detail. But what I want to talk about first is, we'll talk about responsive actions, but as you know, involving our community and having these be community informed is really important. So I just wanted to share some additional work that we've done to solicit input and feedback, because ultimately, we want to have the best policy that satisfies both our community needs and can also help and guide officers very clearly. So we're really blessed, because we have great relationships within our community. And we asked a group of community members to come together, they've been involved in our work before, and we called this audit to action and had a several-hour meeting where we involved our community and got some feedback. And if I could just recognize some folks that are in the audience, I know some are here with me. If you don't mind standing and just, if I could bring them up and just have them introduce themselves, because I'm going to talk about the input that we received. So come on up, everyone. Thank you. If you could just introduce yourself, tell us how you know us and share your thoughts, it would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Deborah Thomas Arnold. I started out working with the officers at the peace walk in Oak Park 10 years ago. And I started also working with Chief Lester and the officers, as well as working on the advisory committee. And so it's been a very honor and a privilege to working with them to help improve relationship between law enforcement and the community. And it's been an honor also to go through the, the workshop that I went through with them last year as well. So I continue to work toward that effort to improve all, not only our community, but our relationship with police officers and Chief Lester. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Chambers. And I've been volunteering, well, maybe giving my input for the last four, four or five years to different community groups, like the Faith in Blue, giving input on the last workshop, attending different events. Sorry, I'm nervous. Attending the different. Sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm David Chambers. I'm Jennifer's husband. And we participated together in all these activities about four years, we started about four years ago, through Saddle Baptist Church. Our pastor, Pastor Saddle invited us to participate in community conversations and Faith in Blue activities and working with the sheriff, with the, with the chief. And we really felt that, well, you know, we've been in Sacramento for quite some time. I've been in Sacramento since the early 70s. And we felt that we either be part of this problem or part of the solution. And we felt that there are a lot of good police officers here in Sacramento. And we want to do what we can to let them know that we appreciate their work. And we also want the chief to know that we also want them to, we don't, we know that they don't like bad officers either. And nobody does. And we want to do what we can to help them to get our feedback on how we feel about that. So we've been doing this for a few years and we were asked to come to the city council to get recognized, and here we are.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming and for your involvement.
How you doing? My name is Calvin Warren. I'm born and raised in the Del Paso Heights area. And we've been doing a great job trying to build relationships between the police and, and then the community. And we've been doing a lot of things. We, we actually been working on a lot of projects, on trying to bridge in that, trying, trying to bring, bring officers and community members together and trying to keep the complaints down and stuff like that. So we've been doing a great job with that and multiple other things. There's a list of things that I could say that we've been working on and that's been coming together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Isaiah, yeah. Thank you. We, so we had a group of probably 35 or 40 community members that have worked really closely, and they give us really good feedback, constructive criticism, and quite honestly, critiques. So we sent an invitation out after that meeting, just to let them know that we were having the council meeting and to provide some feedback on the recommendations that they made and let them know how we're incorporating them into policy. And I just think it's so important, because, you know, these community members volunteer their time. And, you know, it's not easy, certainly, the work that we're doing. So I just really appreciate the time and the effort that they've made, not just during this meeting, but, you know, in other endeavors that we've done. So thank you.
Councilmember, I had a quick question.
Yeah, thank you. And, and thank you to the members of the community who came and are lending their time. I guess I'm curious, just, and then to interrupt, because I know you're going to go into a lot of recommendations talk, how does this group intersect with the Community Police Review Commission that's appointed by the council? Were they involved in this process at all? Or how do you see this group you've convened as sort of relating to that group?
Yeah, well, they're kind of separate. The Community Police Review Commission, as you know, represents council districts and they do a fair amount of their own outreach. And I actually will bring that up as I go through the presentation. But we work with these community groups in a number of areas, looking for feedback. A number have participated in the Advancement Academy. We do Oak Park Peace Walks, as, as you heard, and just really try and interact. And I thought it would be really important to get just kind of a grassroots approach and get. approach and get some, you know, some feedback, you know. Certainly, I understand it's not scientific necessarily, but I do appreciate the time and effort they spent. I think they really did give us a good voice for the community on this, on, at least starting this project. So, so, you know, in addition to calling on the community and doing our audit to action meeting and to follow up with the recommendations, we've been working with the Inspector General, who I know is here in the audience, and we've been meeting with him regularly, really to clarify each of the recommendations, and to seek some additional input in revising or drafting policies. And I just want to thank him for providing some additional policy, policy suggestions and examples, and for the consideration and feedback. I've really heard these have been very positive and productive meetings, so I wanted to thank him for that. And then, as we develop policies, we found that there is an internal policy equity lens assessment tool, and it's provided by Ami Barnes, who is our city's diversity and equity manager. And we're going to use that to assist in crafting policy, which really considers the impact of such policies on our community. And then finally, what we are going to do, what we did when we were developing the use of force policy a number of years ago, is that we established a policy review committee. And that consisted of subject matter experts, some of our training staff, but it also had a representative from the Police Commission on it, as well as now that we have an inspector general, I've extended an invitation to the Chair of the Commission, to see if they would like to send a representative to that policy review committee, and then also invite the Inspector General as we move through, because this is certainly an update that we're providing, and there's more work to be done. So in our discussion with our community members, we didn't just start out with policy, we really started out with questions around the areas that you see in front of you, probation and parole searches and policy, detentions and pat downs, pretext stops, and handcuffing, and asked them questions about how they feel about officers immediately asking, for example, if someone is on probation or parole, and if they had recommendations on how that could be better asked. Consistently, we found that their feedback was prior to asking if somebody is on probation or parole, depending on the situation to, you know, and if feasible, to make sure the officer should give some background, or context, or at least an introduction. And that was consistent from our community group. Regarding pat downs and detentions, we, we explained that pat downs would be covered in the new policy, and asked, you know, how people felt in general about someone being subjected to a pat down, and what ideas did they have regarding those searches, and how to make them more acceptable. And so, again, they were very insistent that we do provide an introduction, some background from the officer to the citizen, to really explain the reason for the stop whenever feasible. And that's also something that we're incorporating into our, our customer service training that we are doing. And then on pretext stops, we asked, we explained what a pretext stop was, and then really asked if people disagreed, or if they agreed with them, limiting or restricting them in any way. And what we received back was not to eliminate them, they said, hey, we want to be safe, we want to keep guns off the street, but to definitely use balance and conduct those stops with respect, not only to who you stop, but how you interact. We talked about some of the low level, like the low level vehicle code violations, equipment violations, et cetera, and found that one of the suggestions was to possibly partner with retailers to get discount coupons to give out with fix-it tickets to help people repair vehicles. And then, of course, to explain the reason for the stop to the citizen and document that, you know, why. And we actually have some legislation that supports that as well. Regarding juvenile handcuffing, you know, we actually shared the San Jose's policy that had been provided by the Inspector General, as well as OPSA, and used it as a guide. And we asked, what if anything would they add or subtract for it? And the, people recognize that sometimes it is hard to, to determine the age of a juvenile, but in all cases, we really do need to try and explain what we're doing, to deescalate the need to handcuff a juvenile if possible. And so then there's some additional things that we'll talk about. As far as actions, one of the things that we'll be taking away and doing in the future is that policies are really going to focus on what the spirit of the policy is, you know, and we receive that feedback as well from our community members. Our policies will now be written with transparency, and really the concerns of the community is one of its primary goals. And so when we talk about the spirit of the policy, the example that I can use would be the use of force policy, where we talk about proportionality, sanctity of life. We really tried to craft it so that we can emphasize the need for de-escalation. So it's not just a nuts and bolts, but we're really trying to explain what we're trying to do with that policy. And then Lieutenant Clayton Buchanan will talk about some of our standalone policies that we'll be developing. And, oh, I'm sorry, I clicked too quick. We'll talk about some accountability. One of the things that had come up was, we do need to take some additional steps regarding, some additional reporting after searches. If you've heard the term RIPA, it's the Racial Identify, Racial Identity and Profiling Act. And we document the reasons for detentions and traffic stops and detaining individuals. With that, we fill out a form, it's reported to DOJ, and we actually found that we can expand on that form and craft it. And so we've created a narrative box, which will now allow officers to, to really record the justification and the reason for the stop if there's not a report. So in all cases, we'll have documentation of why a stop was conducted. And, you know, we're very big on training. We did a roll call training bulletin that was issued just a few weeks ago to address the update in these guidelines, and to instruct officers on how to comply with the new reporting requirements. So the other thing is, as you know, we have a really good partnership with the National Safety Partnership. That was the grant that we were given for technical assistance. And we are assigned a subject matter expert who has extensive law enforcement experience. We actually reached out to that group for assistance, and got some great ideas on how we can deliver training to officers in the field through a series of guided roll call trainings that we will be implementing. And finally, this team, just in the last week, did site visits to the Los Angeles Police Department, and the Los Angeles Sheriff's Office to Research Policy Training, pretext stop policies and compliance, which we'll talk about. So I'm going to turn this over to Lieutenant Buchanan to talk about the specific recommendations, and then I'll come back and talk about our proposal for an internal compliance division, why we're asking for that. So thank you. There you go.
Good evening. Like she said, I'm Lieutenant Clayton Buchanan. Been working on this project for a while. There was 19 recommendations. Out of those recommendations, eight are already in practice or being updated. 10 we newly adopted, and one's under research consideration. I'm going to go through each one individually with you guys tonight. So the first recommendation was that SPD should update its search and seizure manual from 2007. We totally agree with this recommendation, and our search manual was being revised prior to the audit. Now it's going to add some more inclusive details on expanded purpose statement, additional guidance on supervisory control, video documentation procedures, updates on consent and probable cause searches, updates on probation and parole searches, appropriate and prohibitive search techniques, vehicle searches, and expanded reporting requirements. This revision will be ready for city attorney review in approximately 60 days.
Does that review include OPSA review, by the way?
That'd be part of the policy committee, and we've been meeting with the IG with any of the policies regarding this audit. I've been meeting with the Inspector General and letting him look at the policies and provide input to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Recommendation two, SPD should draft a clear and detailed standalone Fourth Amendment policy that includes such things as cell phone searches, probation searches, investigative stops, and consent searches. We did create a standalone investigative detention policy. However, we merged it with the search and seizure policy at the recommendation of the Inspector General. Probation and parole searches will be covered in the revision of our search manual. And we are creating a standalone electronic device search and seizure policy that will cover all electronic devices, not just cell phones. The search, search manual and search and seizure policy will be ready for the city attorney review in 60 days, and the new electronic device will be ready in 90 days. Recommendation number three, SPD should require officers to articulate in their reports why they stopped a citizen and/or why they felt the need to pat down the person. We currently have this in practice. The chief just talked about the RIPA policy being changed. But as of August 21st, 2023, SPD officers are now required to enter a detailed explanation as to why they detained or conducted a pat search of a person when completing a RIPA compliance report. That policy is also being updated to revise to put that into policy, and that should be ready and finalized in 30 days. Recommendation number four, SPD should establish a clear detailed policy on pat downs, investigative stops, and investigative detentions. The new search and seizure policy will cover pat down searches, investigatory stops, and investigative detentions, with an emphasis on the importance of the Fourth Amendment protections and effective and professional communication between officers and citizens who are contacted. This will be ready for city attorney review in approximately 60 days. Recommendation number five, SPD should provide training to new recruits and police officers on investigative stops, pat downs, refusal suspicion, and Fourth Amendment fundamentals in accordance with a newly issued policy. SPD has been conducting this training and will continue to do so. The California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training mandates that new recruits receive training on investigative stops, pat downs, refusal suspicion, and the Fourth Amendment fundamentals. And the Police Academy, these topics are taught in several learning domains, which are their blocks of instruction, and equate to approximately 87 and a half hours of classroom instruction. New officers in field training are also required to show proficiency in these topics via performance, and two written and one oral examination in order to go graduate from field training program. So before they go out by themselves, they have to take two written and one oral examinations on top of the 87 and a half hours of instruction. As new policies are created, or existing policies modified, curriculum will be updated to reflect those changes. Recommendation number six, SPD should develop a clearly defined policy outlining procedures for the search and seizure of cell phones. Since 2014, we have issued several roll call training bulletins on the cell phone searches, with the most recent being released in March of 2023. The creation of our new electronic device search and seizure policy would cover cell phone searches in depth. We are also in the process of completing a First Amendment activity policy that would cover the rights of onlookers, the people that are video recording police activity. The new electronic device search and seizure policy and First Amendment activity policy will be ready in approximately 90 days. Recommendation number seven, SPD should develop a clear policy defining the rules and procedures for conducting probation searches. SPD's current search manual revision will include updated rules and procedures for conducting probation searches on persons, vehicles, and residents. Again, this will be ready in approximately 60 days. SPD, OPSA recommendation number eight, SPD should implement continuous education and training for legal updates, probation search waivers, implicit bias, and community oriented policing. SPD has already been conducting training on these topics equating to approximately 29 hours of classroom instruction, with an additional 40 hours of field instruction. Curriculum is constantly being updated, reflect any changes in law, policy, post requirements, or best practices. SPD is in the process of providing officers with more robust legal updates via our professional standards unit. Recommendation number nine, SPD should train officers to obtain search warrants whenever feasible, and not rely so heavily on search waivers. In 2022, a new search warrant for patrol course was designed and has been presented 12 times. The purpose of this course is to provide personnel with an overview of understanding of search warrants. Personnel are instructed on comprehension of search warrant purposes, composition, execution, and search warrant returns. This course is still active and will be available to more officers to attend this year. In annual training this year, there is a broader investigations update, which covers search warrants and other investigative procedures. The search manual revision will include updated protocols and considerations on when obtaining a search warrant would be most appropriate. And that search manual will be ready for city attorney review in 60 days. Recommendation number 10, SPD should establish a clear policy outlining towing procedures, as well as procedures for releasing personal property from their respective vehicles, and releasing citizens from police custody when their vehicles are being towed. SPD does have a policy on towing vehicles, however, it does not cover releasing personal property or talk about lengthy detentions. This policy is currently being revised, include language recommended by OPSA regarding detention of citizens and releasing personal property. This policy will be ready for city attorney review in approximately 60, 60 days. Recommendation number 11, SPD should develop policy specifying handcuffing procedures for minors. SPD has four policies regarding officer interactions with juveniles. SPD will update the following juvenile policies utilizing best practices on handcuffing juveniles. Protective custody policy, arresting, booking, releasing juveniles policy, truancy and curfew violations policy, and prisoner security policy. The above policy will be revised and ready for city attorney review within 90 days. And we're doing that based off best pattern, pattern of practices and community input. Recommendation number 12, SPD should receive continuous education and training on implicit bias. SPD currently has, SPD has already been providing continuous education on implicit bias. We have an eight-hour Peace Officer Standards and Training certified course on procedural justice, which covers this topic, and a two-day, 16-hour post-certified course on the transformational policing model that will be available to officers in the near, near future. Transformational policing is a culture shift that promotes justice and equity, fostering trust, collaborative community relationships, and empowering all officers to make positive change to benefit the communities they protect. In 2024, several topics will be taught in annual training to include implicit bias, strategic communications, and racial profiling. Courses and curriculum will be updated on a regular basis for relevance per post guidelines. Recommendation number 13, SPD should develop a policy for conducting welfare checks that encompasses warrantless entry into citizens' homes. SPD currently meets state requirements regarding Penal Code 11106.4, which mandates that all departments have a written policy and standard protocols when responding to welfare checks that involve a subject who is possibly in a mental health crisis. In addition to that policy, SPD will be creating a new policy that covers welfare checks involving subjects who are not experiencing mental health crisis. The new community caretaker policy will be ready in approximately 90 days. Recommendation number 14, SPD should develop a policy for police interactions with citizens who have concealed carry weapons license and carrying their weapon at the time of interaction. In addition to OPSA recommendations, SPD is creating a new legal carry interactions policy, which will include protocols for officers on how to interact with citizens who are lawfully armed, not just citizens who have a CCW license. This policy will be ready in approximately 90 days. Recommendation 15, SPD should emulate, eliminate the practice of pretextual stops, or set clear restrictions on conducting pretextual stops. We have been researching the best practices regarding the restricting of pretextual stops since the beginning of this year, to include looking at policies from other jurisdictions, as well as meeting with other departments and community members regarding their input. The implementation of restrictive pretextual stops into policy is still under consideration, pending further research and development, as well as the potential passage implementation of Senate Bill 50, which is currently in the Assembly. This recommendation is still under consideration. However, we are working on drafting policy language regarding pretextual stops into our, our policies. Recommendation 16, SPD should develop a policy for traffic stops. Per OPSA recommendation, SPD is creating a detailed traffic stop policy with research into best practices via review, via review of policies from other large law enforcement agencies, and the International Association of Chiefs of Police recommendations. The new policy will be ready for city attorney review in approximately 90 days. Recommendation number 17, SPD misconduct complaint cases investigated by the Internal Affairs Division, as well as misconduct complaint cases investigated by supervising personnel, when employees assigned division must be investigated impartially and thoroughly to ensure the most accurate findings. This is already a current practice at SPD. In May of this year, we reorganized our Internal Affairs Division. All complaints are now being investigated by Internal Affairs, no matter the source of the complaint. This is done to ensure thorough and consistent investigation. This process includes a detailed investigative summary, along with applicable case law and policies. Recommendation 18, SPD leadership should receive supplemental search and seizure training on January 24th of 23 from the SAC DA's office. The SAC DA's office advised that supplemental training would be developed specifically for officers. All SPD officers should be mandated, mandated to attend this supplemental training. SPD concurs with OPSA's recommendation. The Sacramento District Attorney's Office presented a two-hour instructional course on search and seizure. The class was videoed and recorded, and has been assigned to all officers to view and acknowledge. We expect this recommendation to be completed in approximately 90 days due to operational logistics. Recommendation 19, police officers, as well as SPD leadership, should take cultural sensitivity training, fair and impartial policing training, implicit bias training, and constitutional policing training. Our bias-based policing already mandates that SPD officers engage in periodic and ongoing training on the subject of bias-based policing, in accordance with state laws and Peace Officer Standards and Training continuing professional training requirements. Officers receive approximately 41 and a half hours of classroom instruction during the academy. During our post-academy, which is five weeks after the basic academy, officers receive training related to deaf culture and gender awareness. While in field training, the, excuse me, the Field Training Program Guide requires all new officers to discuss cultural diversity in ways to build trust with community with their field training officers before they're allowed to graduate field training. SPD is researching a new interactive educational program for community members and police officers to jointly attend the African American Museum in Washington, DC. This is being done by other departments nationally, and we're seeking grant money to, to get this program off the ground. So this recommendation is accomplished with additional exploration of a new educational Thank you for you guys' time. Turn it back over to Chief Kathy Lester.
Thank you. So as you can see, there's been a lot of work that's been done on these. I know policy isn't, like, probably the most exciting subject, but I really want to commend the team for being very thoughtful, and being very thorough, and finding ways that not just in it, not just with the OPSA audit, but ways to expand in a number of areas. So really appreciate their work on it. So the second part of our presentation will be a little bit shorter, will be just a request and why we're asking to staff an internal compliance office. You know, what is compliance? Really, a set of processes an organization uses to ensure that as a whole, we are abiding by the internal rules of conduct and external rules and regulations. But But in my opinion, it's not just about checking that proverbial box. There are really some additional benefits to the city, our department, and certainly our community. And it's not a new concept in business or government. You know, it goes back to the turn of the 20th century where you saw regulations in the financial industry, in the medical industry, in business. So today, the laws and regulations that apply to organizations have gotten really complex, and it's not exclusive to businesses or government, but certainly law enforcement. So a compliance office, really what we're proposing is that they would have the responsibility of researching new regulations that apply to our industry and our organization, learning about and implementing evolving best practices, developing and implementing policies and procedures with really an eye towards keeping our organization in full compliance with regulations and ensure the enforcement of a number of our compliance-related policies, conducting audits, and developing plans to ensure that we're taking the right thing and doing the right thing. And in all cases, compliance really strives to be proactive in preventing problems, which is really preferable, as you know, to correcting violations after they've occurred. And I'm going to show a slide and just kind of talk about, you know, the mandates that we have taken on as a law enforcement agency and what, how that's really a driving force behind a lot of this. So we know that a compliance office is really a best practice for constitutional policing. We have long recognized the need to do this, and I really see this as an opportunity to restructure organization, bless you, in a better way. You know, not just for internal compliance, but we have promised a lot of, you know, reform efforts. If you go back to the DOJ recommendations that we're continuing to work on, and I feel that consistent internal oversight with some sustained institutional knowledge and expertise will result in higher quality of our deliverables and allow us to reach our goals. The OPSA report was an example of how we could benefit from such an office. The audit showed that many of our policies are just out of date, and there was a request for some additional and improved training. So an internal compliance office can help identify these trends earlier and centralize many of the strategic initiatives that we engage in. So I'll kind of just touch on the responsibilities that we're looking at. Well, we're only asking for a handful of people. The thought is to, if they, you know, are granted, that we can do some internal restructuring and reorganization to bring a number of units underneath this compliance division. Right now, we're looking at the responsibilities of the DOJ, one and two recommendations, following up on mandatory use of force reporting for counsel, OPSA and the Inspector General recommendations. You know, working with the commission, there are a number of recommendations, and Acting Captain Jeff Shirashi has really been the liaison with our Assistant City Manager Mario, working with the commission, and there's a lot of work to be done there. We have a number of mandates from post. Certainly with PRAs, we had over a thousand PRA requests last year that needed to be filled and reviewed by attorneys and armored vehicle deployment and reporting requirements in addition to our military equipment. So this office will coordinate and ensure really department-wide adherence to these internal and external recommendations. And, you know, some of these are legislatively mandated, some are internally driven. However, we find that since they're not necessarily housed in one area of our department, since we don't have that division, that we could certainly improve timeliness, efficiency, and compliance by just moving them into one centralized location and structuring this in a, in a better way. If you look, and this is kind of, I mean, this is really telling. If you look at the number of legal mandates that have come to law enforcement, you know, for many good reasons, especially on the transparency side of things, a lot of these are unfunded, but there are requirements that we absolutely need to make sure that we adhere to as a law enforcement agency. And if you notice, we included the sponsor of these bills and the dates. We have the RIPA 8953, which goes back to 2015, but we really implemented that in 2019 and '20. The majority of these bills are, you know, less than five years old, majority within, you know, three or so years. So obviously, that's a big lift for the department. Currently, this is dispersed throughout the department in all divisions, and as you can imagine, it's difficult to track these legislative changes and requirements when they're spread across our whole department. So we feel like this is a better way to ensure consistency and making sure that we're meeting the mandates. Some additional responsibilities, we always try and be forward-thinking, you know. We know that there's a recommendation for some national best practices, including a proposed national certification. If it goes through, it could potentially impact our ability to receive grants because we want to make sure that we're certified. We're also looking as part of not just this audit, but as part of trying to make process improvements, working with the COPS office, they have CRE-TAC, which is a service that we can request, and we have made that request to come in and help us build this out. We also have our Bodyguard Camera Project, our Force Investigations Team, and our Leadership Intervention Program. So in addition to the legal mandates, you know, we're constantly examining, implementing ways to improve what we do. I'm really lucky because I've been given an opportunity to serve as co-chair for the Legislative Committee for Major Cities Chiefs Associations, Association, and also as the treasurer for the Police Executive Research Forum. In both of those capacities, I have the opportunity to look at what other departments are doing, they're forward-thinking, they're really trending in a positive way in law enforcement. And I, you know, it provides a lot of insight on national trends in legislation, and as you know, one of my goals is always to make sure that we provide the best training, tools, and opportunities for the men and women of this department that do a great job day in and out, so that we can deliver the best service to our community. And I want to make sure that we are a professional and really cutting-edge department. So I think, you know, looking at all of the things listed here, as well as trying to be forward-thinking with a strategic plan, especially when it comes to financial planning for the city and for the department, these are all things that would fit into our internal compliance office. You know, in addition to that, this is not uncommon. It's not, it's this kind of a new thing for the city of Sacramento and the Police Department because we haven't, bless you, haven't done this before, but many agencies incorporate this type of office: Oakland, Las Vegas, Los Angeles Police Department, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, NYPD, the Philadelphia Police Department, San Diego, San Francisco. And it's really seen as a best practice. What we know is compliance officers and offices are really responsible for ensuring our organization comply with state and federal law, and really with the ever-growing complexity of regular, of these regulatory requirements, they're really needed more than ever. So we are asking for a new governmental affairs manager to be our compliance officer as well as some staff, staff support. They will act as a dedicated senior-level liaison to the city manager's office, to this council, also to be a liaison with the Police Commission, OPSA, our Inspector General, and other external care holders on really matters of risk management and police reform. And we, what we hope is that this will bring some consistency and institutional knowledge as we intend to hire professional staff and not sworn staff into these, these positions. And just as kind of a side note, I think it does provide some additional growth opportunities. A third of our department is professional staff, the majority of that staff are women, and in our department, they hit a ceiling, there's only so far that you can go. And so by creating a higher level position, it really creates a higher career path, which I think is really important and important to recognize, the support staff and their contributions to what we do as an organization. So further, we're requesting two administrative analysts and one administrative technician. And, you know, I realize that it is a financial ask, but I do think in the long run, if this is done the right way, it'll actually really help us be more efficient and more budget conscious. So the next steps, and then I'll wrap up, or one, we are establishing the Policy Review Committee, because it will not just be for the topics that we've discussed tonight, but there's many, many policies that I think that we could use that committee for, meeting with the USDA, their Collaborative Reform Initiative, and their Technical Assistance Center. Then we're very closely tracking SB 50 to incorporate those legislative mandates. And so I just really want to end with how this benefits our city and our community. We know how important compliance and transparency is, and it's really part of our duty to our community and our stakeholders, and we need to be able to assure them that we are regulating the department and complying with law. This compliance function really helps build trust through honest communication and follow-through. With this office, we'll be able to provide more data, more detailed data to our public and really honor the commitment we've made to provide that data and further best practices. We also know that if you don't have compliance, you really invite reputational damage, not just to our department, but to our city. You know, we want to make sure that we are trusted as a police agency, that we work very hard to engage our community, and we provide the information that our community is asking for, and they've asked for better data and more transparency, and we really do want to provide that. We know that compliance helps with strategy by establishing your organizational values and principles. We can really drive the organization's behavioral, behavior. And this isn't just about having people follow rules. When this is done really effectively, it can increase efficiency because we know we can do a better job overall and help employees, you know, just be successful. And we know that this can drive change and innovation. So the purpose of compliance is not simply managing conduct, but it's really seeking new and better ways to do things. We know this will enhance consistency, it'll give us the ability to shift some of our sworn staff to other assignments that are really critical, and it can reduce those unforced errors, you know, that's really important in risk management. So I just want to end by saying that I really believe that through the establishment and support of this office, we can provide not only better transparency to our community, we can use that data and that information to make better internal and external decisions around policy and training, and we can clearly define our strategic plan, ultimately being more effective and efficient for our community. So thank you for your time. I know that was a long presentation.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Lester. We're now going to hear from the Office of Public Safety Accountability, Dr. Watson, Mr. White, whoever else is going to be presenting here today. Thank you. Obviously, there's two parts of your presentation. Welcome to you. One is your response to the department's response to the audit, and then secondly, the proposal laid out by the city manager to increase the staffing for the Office of Public Safety Accountability and what it, what it would be used for.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Letitia Watson, Director of the Office of Public Safety Accountability. I first want to say how I appreciate my staff for being here, my, my small and mighty staff here tonight with us. They're very excited and appreciative of us having this discussion with our staff. It's a lot of things that OPSA is responsible for doing, and so we want to get better in that aspect. June 20th was a long meeting for you all. That is when OPSA was here presenting our audit, in which you just heard a great deal of information from the Police Department and a lot of Chief Lester's staff in reference to what they've looked at as far as all of our recommendations from that particular audit. But one of the things as to the reason why I stand before you is that I was directed to come back here and basically explain what it is that OPSA needs in order to do better and have the capacity to right some of the wrongs as far as some of the limitations that we talked about for the audit. The main limitation was is that we only did a two-year audit. That's because we didn't have the capacity or the staff to go further into the information that we were looking at. And then also, a lot of the things that we were asked to do last night was probably the latest, was my attended the commission meeting, and they had a lot of questions about their work plan and some of the information that we have that they need as far as the allegations of misconduct that they're trying to look at for the second half of this year. And detailed information is just something that we didn't have on those particular allegations because we don't look at every complaint or every allegation of misconduct. So very limited information last night that we could provide to them, especially with the allegations of discourtesy service, conduct on becoming, those are some of the things that they're really trying to dive into. So again, talking about staffing is not only going to benefit the, the office itself, but it'll benefit the Police Commission, it'll benefit our public, and of course, it'll benefit us providing better service delivery to our community by looking at what it is that we can provide input on and improving. And that's the overall goal, is what we want to do is improve our public safety delivery services to our community here in Sacramento. That's the entire goal. As far as, Mayor, you asked about OPSA's response.
Mr. White, do you want to bring Mr. White up as well for that? I think that would be, I know he was your lead in terms of looking at all this policy, and, you know, it, it seems to me like, well, my view is that the department is being responsive in terms of taking most of the eighteen issues and saying that you are in the process of either updating policies or generating new policies. At the same time, that work is not completed yet, obviously, and so judging the substance is premature. And so the real question, Mr. White and Dr. Watson here, is how are you interacting with the department in this process of the updating of the, the updating of the policies? And how, how are you going to look at this in terms of the final work product?
That's a good question.
I only ask good questions.
No, it's a really good question. You know, when we did the audit, I didn't really know how the Police Department would respond to it, other than, you know, their response, but as Lieutenant Buchanan has said, I have been working with him. We meet just about every month to discuss policies, we email back and forth. So the response to me has been good. Before the audit, there was, doesn't seem to be an emphasis on the Fourth Amendment, and I felt that that was a real issue for a Police Department not to have an emphasis. But after the audit, I do like the response, working with Rudy Chan and Lieutenant Buchanan. So I do give them a lot of credit. So it's kind of an ongoing process, but as of right now, I like what I'm seeing, but it's still early.
Okay. Honest answer. Appreciate it. And you, well, maybe it's both for the captain, lieutenant, and the chief. I think the council wants to know, given some of the difficult history, now that we've passed sort of the pain point of June 20th, and you've obviously worked very hard and come forward with these recommendations, is there going to be a collaborative approach to the finalization of these policies, the new policies and the updated policies? Is that the intent here? Well, go ahead. One of you can-
Mayor, I'd love for Dr. Watson to finish her presentation, if that's okay.
She was finished. No. I would like an answer to my question first. Mr. Bliss, just, yeah, look, just, you'll have an opportunity. Just, I, I know you can't. Let me, let me chair the meeting, please. I want to ask a question. Of course, I'm going to then let Dr. Watson complete her presentation, but I want to know the answer as to whether or not there is an intention now to work together towards the development of these policies. Somebody come up and answer, please.
So the Policy Review Committee will include the Inspector General for the final, final policy reviews, which will be after the chief sees them, and then that'll be, they'll sort of go to the chief and then back to the Policy Review Committee and then back to the chief for final. So yes, they will be part of the process all the way through. Like I said, we, we communicate constantly with each other, and I think that's the final for it.
Okay. Now, thank you. Now, please, complete the presentation. Dr. Watson, Mr. White.
Mayor, just, just a little bit more to what you're saying. Yes, I anticipate collaboration between OPSA, the City Attorney's Office, and the Police Department when ensuring that the policies are what we are looking to see, all three parties involved. So as we move closer, I'm sure you'll have more questions and into implementation as well.
Are you, do you have more? Please continue presenting.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Now, as we, we've answered a few of those questions about the response, SPD's response to OPSA. Now, I'm going to move into why I was directed to come back here and to explain why OPSA is in need of additional staffing. What's up on the screen is just an overview of what OPSA does, and we've talked a little bit about the tracking and the monitoring of our high-profile incidents that occur here in the city, but OPSA also looks at all allegations of misconduct and complaints, or we are, the resolution says that we should. We don't have the staffing, and OPSA has been in existence since 1999 and has never looked at all allegations of misconduct and complaints. When I arrived in 2020, I changed some of the structure, and we started looking at all allegations of misconduct and complaints for the Sacramento Fire Department. Could not make that move for the Police Department because of the sheer number that we received. In June of 2020, Mayor's reform was to implement the Inspector General, so that added another task for independent investig- So that added another task for independent investigation. So we brought on Dwight here. And we still were not able to look at every single allegation of misconduct involving the Police Department. So when we look at considerations for OPAH and you talk about staffing, OPAH was transitioned from being under the leadership of the city manager here in Sacramento to being under sole direction from Mayor and Council. Three full-time positions was allotted to OPAH. This has not changed since 2017. What is very difficult to manage is that throughout this particular time, the filings for allegations of misconduct have increased. This is post George Floyd as well and all the other high-profile incidents that occur between the police and the community across the country that also negatively impact Sacramento. Budget increases, we've received those for SPD and SFD. But OPAH has not since 2017. When you look at, I want to make sure that I included, since I've been in place, I've started making sure that we document our review rate to show what it is that OPAH is actually doing. Our highest review rate was in 2021 at 64%. We have yet to be at 100% with the current staffing that we have. Our job duties continue to increase. One of the things that we are looking into is with the city auditor's office as far as an EEO investigation in regards to practices involving our employees here in Sacramento. I do not have the staffing that the city auditor's office has. I have less than half of what they have. And so they are taking a bulk load of this work. And so we're definitely in need of some more help. When you look at the increases of the complaints being filed, that adds the workload. When you also think about, Mayor mentioned how historic it was when we brought forth the audit. It was the first audit in the history of OPAH. In doing that audit, the other work had to be put aside in order to make sure we completed that in a timely manner. That's something that is not efficient. And we need to get better at making sure we can do audits and we can review cases. So there are some things that need to be done as far as audits and inspections for the Sacramento Fire Department as well as additional and dive into some more information that we uncovered from this first audit for the Police Department. We just don't have the staffing to do that right now. And then this is, when OPAH was established, this list, all of the things that this office would be responsible for. With the four bodies, all of this stuff, it just cannot be done. I've been able to maneuver some things and prioritize and make some things happen. But at the end of the day, we definitely are in need of some help. Six positions, I know that's a, that's a big ask. Six full-time positions is what we are asking for. We have a lot, asterisks by the information. And also in your staff reports, it says working titles because some of this has, is not in existence. And so a lot of it is in the works, but it still depends upon what you all believe that OPAH should have. And so when we talk about the office and what the office can comparable to the other departments here in the city, we do not have an assistant director. So it provides information about when I am away from the office, there is no one, no administrator capable of making decisions here in this office. And so at this particular point for the last three and a half years, even though I'm away, I'm still here because they are able to call me and contact me at all times. This is one of the big ones. We saw this today with the officer-involved shooting investigation that is occurring that happened in the early morning hours. And we have several officers that are involved. It makes the investigation more complex and longer. With our Inspector General being a one-man team, it's very impractical. And it's been very difficult for him to manage an independent investigation from the beginning to the end because these investigations can take anywhere from one and a half to four years, depending on what county you're in and whatever the complications of the investigation is. But help, he definitely needs someone with a good level of investigative experience. I may not be able to bring anyone here that has the amount of years that he has in investigative experience with homicides. But he definitely needs another individual that can deploy with him, that can take on some of those interviews and things that he is responsible for doing to make sure that he conducts these investigations. The other positions, really, really focusing on looking at every single allegation of misconduct and complaint that comes in for both public safety agencies. That's where we want to be. That's where we need to be. One of the things that it will bring to us is patterns and trends. I just so luckily was able to see that something was not right with improper search and seizure allegations. And I decided that I needed to initiate an audit. There's, I'm sure, many other things that I have missed because we don't look at everything. So us having the ability to look at every single thing that comes in is going to only help improve our service delivery here in Sacramento. This just provides the amount of financial ask that I have for you. And it is, it's a huge number. But I found that this quote to be very important. I need numbers, but I do need the right people. And this is the time that I need them with all the things that are going on in society right now. So I find this to be very important. And I'm sure you all have some questions for myself and Chief Lester. So I'm going to keep it brief, and I'll end there.
Thank you. Thank you for a very good presentation, both of you. Thank you. So why don't we hear from the public first? And then we'll turn it over to the city council for debate, discussion, deliberation.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 20 speakers. First is Wendell Brown, Kyra Blackman, Keon Bliss, then O. Wendell Brown.
That's me.
Thank you. Wendell Brown, Kyra Blackman, then Keon Bliss.
Okay. Don't start the clock yet, please. I'm going to put my glasses on. Just don't work without those. I'm going to show you the first part. The African-American Employee Leadership Council fully supports the revision and implementation, adoption, and staffing requests put forth by SAC PD for compliance, OPAH for mission support, and the City Attorney's Office for capacity enhancement. It's imperative that we address the request for an internal compliance office for SAC PD and extend similar considerations to SAC Fire. Furthermore, we kindly urge you to allocate one full-time equivalent position to the city manager's office for a citywide equity compliance officer. This condition will ensure that all executive-level decisions are consistently made through a racial equity lens. We would also like to inquire whether there has been any contemplation to expand the scope of OPAH investigation. And if not, we strongly request that this aspect be considered as well. While we acknowledge the consideration established an internal compliance office for SAC PD, we would like to propose the development and implementation of a disciplinary matrix for all public safety entities tailored specifically for PD and SAC Fire. This metric would provide guidelines to achieve consistency and discipline and eliminate any perception of disparity. It is important to note that a disciplinary matrix does not remove discretion, but rather offer a range of potential sanctions, thereby promoting transparency. We encourage adoption of best practices in this regard. It is crucial that individuals who require repeated training after multiple offenses should be accountable at a certain point. And I do remember the chief saying transparency when they're writing their policies. Transparency is a friend to everybody.
Thank you for your comments. Kyra?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Kyra Blackman. I'm on behalf of the AAELC, as Wendell stated before me, to finish off our recommendation. As part of our ongoing efforts to rectify disparities within the city's organization, the AAELC respectfully requests the city council and city manager to relocate the Office of Equal Employment, EEO, from City HR to the City Attorney's Office along with the necessary authorized FTEs. Our research has demonstrated that such a relocation aligns with best practices observed in comparable cities. In fact, this move would restore faith among city employees who currently lack trust in the city's EEO system, as evidenced by the impending investigation by the City Attorney's Office. We were informed that this matter would be brought to the attention of the CMO, assuming it has not already been discussed. Lastly, with the city auditor's forthcoming investigatory report on the city's EEO claims, it would be a step in the right direction to authorize a budget for reoccurring, for recruiting an equity compliance officer to be situated within the city manager's office. This proactive measure will ensure the promotion of racial equity compliance in all citywide decision-making processes. Thank you for your attention to these matters.
And we said it twice because it's important that we do look at doing that. Because our, we know you can't think of everything at all time when you make these big citywide decisions that impact everybody within the city. So we feel very strongly about that position being created. Thank you for your time.
Are you sure, did you have comments? No, thank you. Keon Bliss, then O.
Counsel, I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Police Review Commission as your vice chair. We're an appointed body that is established by city code to provide and facilitate community participation. And tonight was the first time that I've actually heard that PD essentially has circumvented the commission to create its own community advisory body. That has, we have not been, to my knowledge, have been informed of any such audit-to-action group. And I frankly find it profoundly disrespectful, if not outright racist, that the most, one of the most diverse bodies in this city, among the city boards and commissions, is essentially being bypassed in favor of its own selectively, selectively catered and pan-picked advisory group without our knowledge. And I think you all should be insulted by this, too. We learned last night that the top three complaints alleged by community members has been improper search and seizure, discourtesy, and service, three years in a row. Your own, like, your own Office of Public Safety Accountability staff, who, to my knowledge, are the two senior most black members of, like, members in this city body, in this city government. We're here to present, and we were interrupted multiple times. And our own recommendations, 146 to count, have essentially been ignored, including a proposed disciplinary matrix that the Police Review Commission had recommended as far back as 2019. It's literally, we literally researched four cities to provide this. And we, and our commissioners provided a proposal. And PD just conveniently ignored it. You all ignored it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is O, then MVW. Our next speaker is O, and then MVW.
Can I get the screen to work for me?
Yeah, go ahead and get started, and we'll pull it up.
I also just want to start off with just a little bit of a trigger warning. This has to do with the shooting that occurred this morning. And so I'm going to play this for you all.
Exact spot where that man was seen for hours waving that gun around and where we now know that police shot and killed him. We did have crews on the ground all morning covering this for you, multiple cameras on the ground as well, getting different angles. We are going to show you the video, the moments that led up to that fatal police shooting of the man who had been holding the gun. But we are going to stop the video the moment before you see the gunshot hit him. The audio, though, will continue after that. So you will hear the gunshot. You will also hear our reporter Melanie Wingo, who is continuing her live report after hearing that. This did not air live on TV, the video of the actual impact of the gunshot, but the audio did. So a warning for viewers that you will hear this. We want to show that, too, now. You know, tactical ground approach happening, going toward the parking structure, at least since we've been out here since around 2:30 this morning. We're here, let me just, we just had, we just are hearing, I don't know that that was a flashbang or was that a shot, Brandon?
It could have been a non-lethal round.
It could have been a non-lethal round. And at this point, again, we do know that that was a lethal round. We do know that was the moment that Sacramento police shot and killed the man who had been waving that gun around on the roof since just after 1 o'clock this morning.
Another black man in a matter of like a month, right? About a month, who's suffering a mental health crisis, was shot and murdered by SAC PD, right? No non-lethal used at all. They claimed their officer of information, the one that talks to the media, they claimed that there were gunshots, but there weren't.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is MVW. You have exceeded your speaking time. Please stop speaking and take your seat. Thank you for your comments. Please take your seat. By continuing to speak, you are disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting. You're now in violation of Chapter 5 of the Council Rules of Procedure. If you do not stop, I will order you to leave the meeting. Do you understand this warning? Please return to your seat.
This man needed a mental health professional. He needed anyone but a cop to empty his weapon. After they killed this man, they re, they re, they emptied their clip into him, two officers, and they reloaded their guns.
We do not want to hurt you. Please do not. We are here to help.
That's what his life was worth, four minutes of negotiation.
We're here to help you. We're here to help you. What's your name? Lock on that door. Do not let anyone in that door. Take lethal on that door.
Please, I can't do nothing. I can't do nothing.
Hey, we are here to help you. Just drop the knife. What's your name? No one wants to hurt you. No one wants to hurt you, please. No one wants to kill you. No one wants to hurt you, please.
Please, that's what y'all trying to do.
No one wants to hurt you.
Your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is CJ, then Meg White. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. You have exceeded your speaking time. Please stop speaking and take your seat. By continuing to speak, you are disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting. You are now in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure. If you do not stop, I will order you to leave the meeting. Do you understand this warning? Please take your seat. Please take your seat. CJ, then Meg White.
Um.
Sacramento Police Department violated its existing military use policy by not announcing the use of a non-lethal before firing, and then shooting and murdering said black individual and asking his unresponsive corpse to repeatedly drop their weapon. Sacramento OPD did not even address the original complaints that were presented by this council. Instead, they have the audacity to come before you and ask for more staff for their internal affairs division because it is working so well already. It has been enlightening to, it's been enlightening to talk to your constituents in each of your districts, learning of the exhaustion and their hopelessness when they set eyes on this council. Because your way isn't working. It isn't working. You may complain about, you may complain about the bullying and the disrespect and the ineffective advocacy, but your way isn't working. So like my community has said, what else do we have to do? Do you want us to write the proposal for you? And if so, why are we held to this standard? But SAC PD gets to continuously, just for an entire year.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Meg White. Our next speaker is Meg White. Following Meg, I have 13 speakers online.
Is this the right direction?
Come to the door right now. Open the door. Open the door.
You're not a baby if you're not listening.
Open the door, come outside.
Come outside right now.
Who is here? Who is here? There's not one in here.
No, you don't get to go and hide and turn off the lights. That's not how this works. Okay, but you're going to be the main handcuffs. Because you're not.
When the police are at the door, you do not get to run and hide and turn off the lights. That's unacceptable.
I'm playing this again because it feels like we've forgotten how just a few short months ago, we all sat here shocked and horrified as we watched a small clip of what would have been considered acceptable conduct for the Sacramento Police Department for how they treat a 10-year-old, non-threatening black child, had OPSA not been involved. Just moments later, Chief Lester said, and I quote, "I reject the idea that this report shows there is a systemic practice of improper and insufficient policing." And then referenced wanting to spend more time and taxpayer dollars on further research. The DOJ and OPSA have clearly laid out the statistics that demonstrate the problem with racism in policing in Sacramento. Mayor Steinberg, your response was this, and I quote, "If we don't have a common agreement that we have a systemic problem around race, we're never going to have the opportunity to improve together. At this point, this feels like extortion. It's going to cost the community almost $600,000 to maybe stop the police from harassing, beating, and jailing people of color disproportionately. We need real compliance from the SAC PD with the community funds they already have, even if they tote a few of their black friends who are part of police promo groups." Giving an additional $0.5 million to SPD is a slap in the face to every victim, dead or alive, of police brutality. It sends a message loud and clear that civil discourse does nothing and that public safety funding does not include the safety of black, brown, and poor citizens of Sacramento.
Your comments, your time is complete. Next speaker is Lambert Davis.
Yes, this is Lambert. And anytime that I hear the group called AAELC, you could best believe I'm going to support them. That's one of the most courageous group of people at City Hall. People need to get familiar with them. They're a group that I became familiar with when Sacramento News and Review did the Barnum and Bailey H&R racist scandal in the city manager's office a few years ago. I never heard of them. But I definitely heard of Sacramento News and Review. So whenever I hear them speak, I want them to know that they have a very courageous person that supports them. They are, I believe they're a group of women, if I'm not mistaken. And they have to be courageous to do what they do. Because it takes courage to do what they're doing. So I want them to know that you have my support. And God bless you because you need God's protection to deal with what's going on inside that department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Decarcerate Sacramento is next.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Mackenzie Wilson, organizer here in Sacramento. I think I just want to maybe say the words like rest in power to the life that was lost this morning. Wow. I will also go into saying that I think it's weird that SAC PD is only working with groups, you know, that love law enforcement and didn't, you know, include community input similar to the one done for the military equipment use policy. Is that because you're forced to do it that way? The truth is, your violation of our rights and the harm you caused this community are the same. So anytime you want to talk to community, make sure that you open up the space. It should also be named that they admitted. And already, and as we are talking about the persons who's lost their life, there are so many policies in place. Like y'all, you had eight of these already in place. Yet we still had OPSA reports that looked like this. And so simply, your internal, your part, the new office you want to make, I mean, that should come out of your funds that you already have. You have so many vacancies. You have so much extra money sitting around. You absolutely should not be receiving any more dollars or any more funding, the way that you have been acting out here. Give everything that OPSA said that they wanted, every single dollar. Give it to OPSA. And then on top of that, end SAC PD's use of pretextual traffic stops and remove them from traffic enforcement entirely. Remove their use of unmarked cars and plainclothes officers and remove them from mental health calls. And then pass a data transparency ordinance. And then you should start putting that RIPA data up on the website.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jeffrey.
Can you hear me?
You can.
So I've been listening to the people speak this evening. I actually support what that last person said. I would love to see the information on RIPA. We citizens in this community have been demanding to see the racial inequality of the crimes committed. So I think once the truth was truly exposed on who's committing what crimes and what's really going on, people are going to be shocked. I almost feel like we should let these coons and shrooms run the street like wild animals. Turn the streets of Sacramento into a zoo, run by a Jew.
Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Please proceed if you have comments under the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento.
Yeah, I don't know what I didn't say that wasn't a part of the jurisdiction of Sacramento, but I do think that we should defund the police. We should allow these animals to run the streets and show us exactly what they stand for. No more cops to social or mental calls. Don't let police respond to anything. Let the voters get what they want. Let these people, show them exactly who they are. I support it. Completely defund the police. No more police on mental calls, no more police on anything. Let the business owners fend for themselves. And we can see the Jewish wet dream.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Johnny.
Hello, I would like to say that I thought the Sacramento police officers did a great job. The guy should have just dropped the knife. It's that simple. Jesus Christ is King, ban the ADL, George Floyd was a hoax.
Cut him off.
Next speaker is Ayma.
Yes, hello. I want to say, defund the police. Let the liberal eat their cake. Honestly, I could care less about that police shooting. Every day, we are brainwashed that all police are racist, that they're all bad, they're all out to get us, and that we're the bad ones for breathing a sigh of relief every time a cop drops a nigger.
Stop it. Cut him off.
Next speaker is Erica.
Hi, City Council members and honorable mayor. This is Erica Hadamio. And I was just calling mostly to speak to the corruption within SAC PD. I live in Colonial Heights. I moved here about a year ago. And for the last year, I've really just been being intentional about talking with neighbors and listening to their stories. And what has really struck me is that there are dozens, that's not an understatement, dozens of household renters and homeowners here who do not feel safe. And I live close to one of the corners, it's very visible with crime. And what's striking about it is that, from all the stories that I've heard, dozens, and it's more than dozens, have, calls have been made across the last three years to law enforcement and 311 that just disappear. They're like, the date is gone. And neighbors have asked for copies of their reports or have called to get copies because a lot of this stuff is reoccurring or things are stolen, things just keep occurring across the last three years. And folks don't feel safe. And so as they're following up and trying to get copies of these reports, again, they're finding out that like only three calls, sometimes only two, maybe five across three years have shown up. And so this is probably on a, not low on the totem pole, low on the hanging fruit for you guys in terms of looking into. But like SAC, what's going on? Like, how do calls disappear? Who's auditing, like, reports?
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Jared.
Why do we let people act like savages? I keep hearing the audience acting up, and you let them disrupt meetings. I remember being told to comply with police and to fight it in court later. If any person acted this way, they'd get shot. Start teaching people to stop acting like a bunch of niggers.
Cut it off.
Next speaker is Alexander.
Horrible.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Good. This is Ryan Misano of misanonews.com. I just posted an article on my website, since there is way too much information to cover in two minutes, titled "The Myth of Police Brutality." It includes the highly recommended book, War on Cops, by Heather McDonald. You want to protect the First Amendment rights of onlookers of police interactions, but you can't even defend the First Amendment rights of speakers at City Hall. How hypocritical. If it wasn't for double standards, leftists wouldn't have any standards at all. And why do you keep scrutinizing what races the?
Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Please proceed if you have comments under the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento.
I think he hung up.
Next speaker is Edmund.
Yes, hello, Edmund. I want to say that I hate tyrant cops almost as much as I hate niggers.
Cut it off.
Next speaker is Robert.
Cut it off.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yeah, I just think this is a waste of time to be sitting here talking about police misconduct and wasting taxpayer dollars over this when it's obviously that the savage niggers are the ones.
Cut it off.
Next speaker is June. Next speaker is David.
Hello.
Please proceed.
I just, I feel very sorry for all of us here in Sacramento. You know, we rely on our police for safety and security. But I'm really starting to think that, you know, especially hearing about reports going missing and like who's auditing and stuff, it makes sense. You know, you used to see them driving around all the time, you know, making sure that, you know, people weren't driving too fast or dangerous, or people were behaving and being safe out there in the real world here. And now you don't see them ever. And, you know, all the crime that's running rampant with the homeless. And, I mean, it's pretty obvious, it's like, I mean, where does it end? Where does it end? And I agree, you know, they shouldn't be getting extra money if they're not upholding what they're supposed to do. But then I see videos like this dirty nigger getting shot.
Cut it off.
Our final speaker is John.
Yes, cutting them off immediately.
Our final speaker is John.
The police are enforcers for tyrants. They serve the elite. And it's great to see the rage coming from the leftists when they want a police state. They're so quick to call the police for flyers, free speech, or anyone who disagrees them, but cries every time that a nigger gets handled.
Cut it off.
May I have no more speakers on this agenda item?
Right, let's get into a civil and serious discussion about important set of issues and what's before us tonight. Start with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I just want to start to every black resident, to every black person in this room, especially my colleagues and our staff. Black lives do matter. I apologize that you have to hear comments like that. I know that they're not just limited to this space. And I just want to say, acknowledge that that is unacceptable. We're talking about a serious topic today when it comes to police accountability. And I want to start, I think, with some questions for Dr. Watson, if that's okay. So thank you for the detail in your staffing report. I really like that you mentioned in there attending forums and presenting at forums. I would love to see more focus on outreach in general. I know that when the audit first came forward, one of the caveats that you all put in very clearly, which I appreciated, was the concern that people might not be reporting incidents because they might not know who to report to or might not trust the mechanisms that exist. And so I do want to emphasize in the staffing request, not just presenting at forums, but I know you're starting to do some of that relationship building in that work now that COVID, since you came on during COVID, now that you're able to safely. But just want to reemphasize that. On this response, the series of response forums that we have and the staff item outlining the response to your recommendations and whether they are already implemented or non-implemented, what role did OPSA have in creating those documents?
Hey. Hello.
Stand right in the middle, if you will.
All right.
Here you go. You don't have to hold it. It's good.
So the role OPSA had in creating those documents is none. They created the documents. And my job is to, you know, add, if I see something that is outside of the scope, I give my recommendations. But the policies are already written. And they're, we meet and I look them over to see if I can have any recommendations. One of the limitations of that is that, you know, I don't have a weekend to think about the policies or to think about the recommendations. It's all just in that one meeting. But we don't draft them, they draft them. And really, I just add my take and suggestions to those policies.
Okay. I think moving forward, since I know potential future audits and this implementation plan would be ongoing, it would be great. I think traditional process is more like, you say, hey, we have these flags. The department says, here's our responses. And then you write out your own sort of analysis of what's happened. I know staffing has been an issue and that's part of why we're here tonight. But I would like to see OPSA's perspective on what you're seeing happen and what your recommendations might still be in terms of moving forward with implementation. I guess these are more comments. I will ask Letitia, Dr. Watson, how many times have you and Chief Lester met in the last 12 weeks since the report was initially presented to council?
Yeah.
You have not.
I meet with Howard.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's all my questions for you. I'm going to make some comments now and then ask the police for some questions in a minute. Thank you, Letitia, sorry to bring you up for just that. I have to say that. I have to say that I am feeling not great about where we stand, um, in terms of this audit. And, and I'm going to outline a little bit why. And, and one of the things that I found most glaring is the department's response to concerns about implicit bias training. Um, this is something that we talked about at length at the last meeting when we said, you know, how do we describe, how do we understand these outcomes that are showing more people of color interacting with law enforcement, being pulled over, having searches, having use of force, if not for potential implicit bias? And what I find in this report is essentially the police department saying, well, we're already doing that in our training. And I don't find that sufficient. Um, and so I'll give you a chance to respond in a minute, Chief Lester, but I just have to say that that, to me, was one of the biggest findings of this audit, was that maybe there's more needed to be done on implicit bias. I know we had a lot of dialogue about this at the last meeting, and I'm really disheartened to basically see the box checked on every single one of those and say, oh yeah, it's in post-training. Oh yeah, we're doing this, oh, we're gonna add a virtual tour of the Smithsonian of African-American history, which is cool. Like, don't, like, I will not underestimate, that's a cool experience and people should have it, but that's not quite getting to what we see in terms of outcomes for the department. And so I need to see more seriousness around, these outcomes are not okay, unless we believe these outcomes are okay because we believe that people of color are just committing crimes more frequently, then we need to be taking more steps to address why they are interacting more with officers across the board, right? So that is one bucket of feelings that I have about this. I will also echo, um, uh, the Vice Chair of the Police Commission's comments about the external community advisory group. And I want to couch this for the folks who are still here to be like, no, absolutely no blame on you all. I appreciate that you spent time doing this. I value your input in this process. But we do have a council-appointed community police commission. And I find the fact that we formed an external group and went to them for such extensive feedback, but did not go to the commission for that feedback to be glaring. Um, and it feels intentional. And, and I don't know how else to describe that other than why wouldn't we go to the body who's already convened, who represents all of our districts, who we've appointed to ask for their input when we're doing this 12-week process, if we did not want their input? And that's a question that I want to understand because I'm very bothered by the overall trend we have seen in our relationship with the commission. I appreciate that the Assistant City Manager goes, but the department needs to be there. When we tried to implement that recommendation, we were told by the city manager, we didn't need to implement that recommendation because the department went to the meetings, but they haven't been going to the meetings. And now to have another group formed and to not have their recommendations presented in such detail, it feels glaring. And, and I don't understand why that happened. And I would like to understand why that happened because our process should be working the way it is designed. And, and this feels like we were looking for certain answers. And I don't like that because we knew that the commission had strong feelings about that. And that makes me not feel great about how seriously the department is taking these findings. If you took it that seriously, we would not be shying away from critique. If we took it seriously, we would be digging into critique to try to figure out what's wrong. If we took it seriously, we would be using data and really working through those tensions, which is something that I hope all of our officers are good at because you carry lethal force weapons on you all the time. Um, working through tensions should be a skillset, a prerequisite for being in the department at all. And so I'm bothered when it feels like we're continuing to avoid the tough conversation here. And, and I, that makes me feel really sad because we waited 12 weeks and it was supposed to be right when we came back from summer recess, and it took longer, and I thought, good, maybe it's because, you know, work is happening and I'm seeing this presentation here today. And I feel very incomplete. So I guess, um, I don't know, Chief Lester or whoever from your team would like to talk about the staffing request because when I, and I appreciate the level of detail you put in your presentation and in the staff report, but I find this list of duties concerning for a different reason because these are things I had thought the department was already doing. And, and I say this specifically because in the last several budgets that I've been on this council, compliance with state law has always been named as a need for staffing or resources. It was named most recently in the budget every time we just gave another position for military equipment and armored vehicle compliance, for instance. And so when we talk about needing additional positions and the list of things that are on here in my briefings and conversations, like with the area captains and different folks, these were things I thought we were already doing. Um, so I guess I'd like to hear from you why these are new positions versus a reorg of maybe existing positions? Because I appreciate what you're saying in terms of it's nice to have a senior-level position that's not sworn, that, you know, having a clearer line of who does what. But I guess that's the core of my concern is, well, why aren't we just reorganizing existing people who did that and staff time to create that dedicated division? Why are we asking for additional people for things like legal compliance?
I think it's pretty simple. We have been given a number of mandates, and what we've done as a stopgap is to spread those throughout the department. Training has some, our policy division has some, the Office of the Chief has some. Give you an example, for the Military Equipment Use Ordinance, Deputy Chief Leong took that on. That's not the responsibility of Deputy Chief, it's not a good fit. He should be running a division and working on everything that entails. And so what we've done, um, over the last number of years is to spread these throughout the organization, hope that we can meet the mandates. And for the most part, we are, we are in compliance, we do report, a lot of the data is out there. But there is a better way to do it. And the OPSA recommendations, um, were just one thing. They identified, uh, trend, policy gaps, and we do have those. For example, the Search and Seizure Manual, um, is dated in 2007. I believe the search and handcuff goes back to 1995. What happens is our policy division that works very hard, I mean, I think I mentioned that we had over a thousand Public Records Act requests. Those all have to be vetted. Then we lean on the city attorney to make sure that we are producing the right information. I do appreciate very much that the council has supported the work of our department through transparency and through the demands by giving us some additional record staff for redaction for all of the other mandates. However, that's just basically meeting the bare minimum. And I think that we can do a better job. I think we can be more forward-thinking. And when you look at agencies that do this well, um, that are really trying to affect change in law enforcement, having a strategic officer to help with your compliance, to help with strategy, certainly to help with risk management, I think is essential. You know, could we continue like this? Yes, we can. Um, we will continue to hit our mandates. Is it the best way to do it? No, I don't think so. And if you go back into about 2008, where we saw like the beginning of the recession, that hit the city of Sacramento about 18 months later, 18 to 24 months by the time we see the impact. We started cutting vacancies, we started cutting positions. We cut a fourth deputy chief, and the other three deputy chiefs absorbed that work. Had things not have changed, you know, we could probably continue to function like that. But if, um, you can see just the requirements of what we need to do and what we're trying to accomplish. There are certainly things that we also do here in the city that are, um, are self-imposed, but for a good reason. You know, we talk about transparency. Um, we built our transparency page. I would challenge you to find another agency in the region that puts that much information out. It's not legislatively mandated. You know, do I want to put more information out about demographics? Do I want to have that analyzed? Absolutely. But to get us there, that's above and beyond what we're already doing, and that's why we're asking for the positions. If we get them, then we can certainly consider a reorg. If we don't get those positions, we'll continue to progress and do the best we can with what we have, for sure.
Okay. I appreciate that you mentioned the military equipment specifically because that was one example that pinged in my head where I'm like, I know we gave at least one additional position just for military equipment oversight. I know when the initial, the PRA expanded, because I remember the clerk made a similar ask to say, oh my gosh, we're gonna get so many more Public Records Act requests that we gave additional staff for the redacting. And so I guess I just, when you already have 100 vacant positions and that budget for those positions, I guess I just, I need to see a clearer financial justification because my question for the city manager is really, where's this money gonna come from? Um, what's, what's the plan? I do support OPSA having funding because it bothers me that they're not able to look at 100% of the complaints. There could be things hiding in there that we just didn't get to, that we, that might be important for us to know for department policy. I support, I mean, the city attorney, I saw how much the team has been working on many of the cases, including this effort. But this one really troubles me because it feels like every time something, any requirement around what I consider to be existing law and expectations comes up, the request is, well, we need more staff. And I've heard that enough times now that it makes me wonder, where is the accounting for the staff we have and the money we have? But moreover, where is the money gonna come from, city manager? And how are we planning to budget for these positions? Um, because this is significant funding moving forward.
So all the funding that's before you today is, uh, general fund, Measure U funding. So, uh, like all the other, uh, discussions we had over budget, things that we do in the current year, we need to solve for, based, we have to have a balanced budget per our charter. It creates more, uh, the deficits in the out-years that much greater. So that's, that's the answer.
This is all unencumbered general fund money? Like, non-committed, non-budgeted?
Measure U, general.
Measure U, general fund. Here comes, uh, Assistant City Manager Mills tonight.
Oh, sorry.
She's, she's coming.
She's way in the back.
Councilmember, please.
Also, I mean, I guess that's, I mean, that's the question, my final question here in addition to just general comments that I've already made. But, um, you know, if we had 1.8 million kind of sitting around at the end of the budget, that's of interest to me. But also like if we don't, then I assume this is coming from other budget items. And so just curious how we're making that work, if this is approved tonight.
No, we didn't, uh, Lainey Mills Stein, Assistant City Manager, we do not have these funds available. We will be, um, utilizing our commitments for future labor costs in order to pay for this in the current year. And we will be probably making reductions, uh, in future budget years in order to pay for these types of additions.
Okay. So this is all just labor money, so nothing else is being touched, um, at this time that the council's approved?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, well, then I guess my closing comments are just that, um, I mean, I did not need to see those videos again, um, but I'm glad that some people showed them because I feel like it is important for us to remember why we're here. Um, and I feel like this audit is a real opportunity, um, to build a stronger relationship. I am bothered by the fact that OPSA and the chief don't have a more direct relationship, and I'll just name that. Like, I think communication between the department heads needs to be open. If it's not, that concerns me. Um, I think that, you know, we should be taking the implicit bias concern more seriously. Just saying it's in existing training and we're adding these additional modules is not sufficient, unless we are okay with the outcomes we are seeing with use of force and traffic and other incidents, which I am not. And I'm supportive of the OPSA and city attorney positions, but I'm not supportive of the police positions at this time. And really hope that we can have a more thorough discussion. It just always feels like the answer is we need more money and more positions. And I, that's a big department with a lot of money. And I feel like I'd need to know much more about what is currently being done before we can really have that discussion for that, those money positions.
Thank you. I'm gonna go next, uh, if I may, then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Liloe. I appreciate Councilmember Valenzuela, you laying out, you know, the, the opposition case, especially on the police position side. I want to say that I have a different take. And I want to explain why. First of all, I think it is important to acknowledge your point, at least the way I took your underlying point, that, um, there is a long way to go here. There's a long way to go. This is not like, uh, you know, this, it, this is not, uh, an end by any means. I mean, and let's be honest about it. The process that got us here, the difficulty in, in the way that the audit itself proceeded and the tension between the police department and OPSA, um, was troubling. It was troubling. At the same time, the relationship between the commission and the police department is also troubling. I think, and I'll really be unpopular here, that there's two sides to that story. That's what I think. I'm sorry. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm going to tell you my truth. There's, that's my belief. There's two sides to that. I do think the police department must be at the commission. But I also think that there needs to be civil discourse. Can't have people being flipped off right and left and all the other stuff that goes on. That's my opinion. I'm gonna speak my opinion. I don't really, I, I'm gonna just speak, I'm just gonna speak my, my truth. You speak yours, and I respect your opinion and difference of opinion. I do think, though, that, uh, the commission, you know, I didn't think it was necessary to bring forward other community members tonight, frankly. That, that was a statement, and I don't think it was the right statement because you do have a appointed police review commission. That we have to figure out how we work through these relationship issues and make them better. I also, and I'm gonna get to the positive in a moment because I think there's a lot of positive here. That's why I support this, this recommendation tonight. We have to come to a community consensus that policing is a very dangerous job and that implicit bias is real. How is it that we can, on the one hand, say that the police department must witness open-air drug dealing or human trafficking in homeless tent encampments before they can make an arrest? And at the same time, we have an issue of stopping people of color without seeing whether or not the individual of color may have committed or did not commit an underlying crime. That's a problem for me. And so that's why this audit was so important, and that's why this work together is so important. At the same time, I think tonight is a major advance. And I want to thank Chief Lester for the way she has responded to the audit itself and the city manager for the way you have marshaled the team to spend endless hours to be seriously responsive to what OPSA has put out. And Mr. White here, who, um, by reputation and by what we have seen, is an honest, hard-hitting guy. And, and developed a lot of these, uh, uh, audit recommendations along with Dr. Watson. Well, he said what he has seen thus far has been positive. And we can either buy ideo-, we can either be ideological about this or we can actually be practical about what it's gonna take to improve oversight, which ought to be our goal. And what's gonna improve oversight is adding capacity to OPSA and then adding non-sworn, by the way, non-sworn positions to the police department so that they can be much more responsive and timely. And to add resources to the city attorney's office so that they too can provide the timely legal advice so that we can improve these relationships. But more important than the relationships, we can actually do the work that OPSA began so courageously and earnestly in putting forward this audit. What are you gonna do in rejecting this? We're gonna go back to scrambling to try to figure out how they're going to meet their, th- th- their obligation? Without the resources? And then with the police department, what? They shouldn't have a unit that's, that's responsible for actually compliance and responding to these things? I don't understand where it takes us and where it puts us if we reject this tonight. So tonight, I think today is real progress. It's not the, it, it's not the end, and the relationships still need work. But it's not, i- i- but this is progress, and we oughta see it as such, and we oughta move this forward tonight. Councilmember Vice Mayor Geta?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You know, I, first, um, I don't disagree with, with your comments on the point of making sure that, you know, if we're gonna have to have compliance, um, then having non-sworn officers that have the capacity to be able to meet those compliance requirements is essential. Um, I also, you know, agree with the AAELC's recommendations, you know, to provide a, you know, and I've talked about this for years, about, uh, a, a larger city, uh, recognition of these challenges. So, uh, but even with that, you know, you know, I'm eating my own words here. I do worry, uh, about a piecemeal approach on the budget. And for, um, for a while and in, and years past, um, when we got into those situations, it, um, you know, and I caution, I agree with you today that it, that it does move the needle forward. But, um, when we do piecemeal allocations to the general fund, it can bloat the budget. And I, it's not that I don't think we can adjust it for this year, but I do worry about the out-years, what '25, '26, '26, '27 begin to look like. And, uh, without having that consideration when we just do it one by one. So that, that's my, uh, concern and my hesitation. And even so, even right now, in our approach to resolving our collective bargaining agreements and where we are at that, we're, you know, we're, we're not having a lot of flexibility. So, so, you know, maybe, um, Mr. City Manager, and this is aside from the policy of, does OPSA need more support? You know, does the department need more support for compliance? And does your, should your office have a funded, you know, FTE to make sure that we have a city manager-level person looking at these equity issues? You know, so I guess maybe that's, that's my concern, Mr. City Manager, uh, about, you know, this piecemeal approach. Because even on the, you know, you and I have had disagreements about mid-year budget adjustments, which I think are appropriate. But again, it's, it's, it, uh, it puts us in positions where I worry about, uh, you know, we look, we're looking at this not in the full context of everything. And even the funding we approved earlier today, that's grant money. That's not general fund money, so.
Well, so, couple things. I agree with you, Vice Mayor. We have the, uh, we set aside some dollars for- some dollars for our collective bargaining agreements that are gonna be forthcoming. What we're really saying here is that if the number is around roughly $2 million, we're saying that whatever year-end balances we have typically, if any this year, will get, this will get first priority for filling. But to your point, in the longer term, absolutely. It's something that we have to look at, even with our labor agreements, and so all the, the bargaining units that we've been talking with as we're trying to nail down some of these agreements, you know, we've said that, that there's gotta be an understanding that if somehow we hit a downturn, that that is gonna look like a reduction like we did in years past with the recession. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that, but your point is well-taken. I mean, that is a concern, but along the same lines, when the audit first came forward, the request was, hey, let's figure out what the timing is to come back on these recommendations, and let's really bolster what the resources, what the resources look like in order to do a better job here, so that we don't end up in that same place again. So, you know, I fully support the, the requests that come forward, otherwise I wouldn't have moved it forward that way.
Look, I, I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish, you know, look, I mean, I do think the more we get ahead of these issues, particularly around search and seizure, we, we, not only is it the right thing to do, but it, it prevents us from ending up in a constitutional litigation over people's, you know, fundamental Fourth Amendment rights. But at the same time, I guess, you know, that, that is my concern about a, you know, in the third quarter budgeting, you know, let's put it that way. So, so, yeah, no, I guess, look, I'm, I'm willing to, to move forward here today, but that is, again, both on not just PD but OPA, and even on that request, those are my concerns, and they can, if you feel that, that we can manage the cost of it within the, the current year budget, but I would like to see when we, particularly when it comes to the mid-year budget, okay, what is, what is this and other priorities? I'm assuming, you know, we're not without situations where a fire or flood or something comes up in the next coming years, or coming months, that we're gonna have to deal with at the mid-year budget, too. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Luloe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm not very comfortable with the ask. Again, we are asking for more money, more taxpayers' commitment to how we run our operation. You know, all you have to do is go out there and see how the middle class is being squeezed between gas prices and simply costs of food. You know, I don't think our situation is gonna get resolved by merely bringing more personnel. There is obviously a major issue, and that is where, at least where I'm sitting, I think our OPA operation is working, but also is waiting for that gotcha moment. I think our police department is working hard, but is also trying to fight back, not fight back, to push back some of the comments by OPA. So it becomes a, a very unprofessional environment, and now we're asked to, let's take another $1.5 million from our city budget and allocate it to these departments, not knowing if it's gonna work or not. I mean, we can, we can allocate $3 million to this. What does it say that, what guarantees do we have that, you know, OPA and the police department are gonna meet on a regular basis, that OPA is gonna, you know, I heard, you know, I, yes, they, they emailed me the policy, I'll look at it, but I might not have time to review it. Well, that's not being efficient. If you're getting the policy at 10 o'clock at night on a Friday, then I'm sorry, it comes with the job. Spend your weekend, review it, make sure you understand it, send an email asking additional questions, and then get it back. The idea that the police department writes the policies, okay, I understand that, and that's the way it should be, but the fact that it gets emailed to the OPA's office, and you don't have enough time to review it or respond back to it, again, that's somewhat alarming, and, you know, now we're here asking for $1.5 million so we can have this kindergarten fight going back and forth on a regular basis, and we're not accomplishing anything. We, we need policies that would make, make sure our officers are safe, make sure our community's safe. We need policies to make sure that the residents in, in certain communities feel respected and feel safe, and when we're talking about these things, it, it just, it leaves a really bad taste in my mouth. The reason there is a gap between the police department and certain communities is because we've spent two years talking about this issue without any, anything coming out of, you know, as a result to say, hey, we accomplished this. Chief, we talked about this. There is a gap, without a doubt. We have to make sure that our, all of our officers understand that as much as their job is to provide safety for all the citizens, but it comes with a certain amount of customer service. After all, anybody that gets pulled over, at the end of the day, every officer needs to look at them as they contributed to their paycheck, regardless whether it's a tinted window, expired tag, but that's how we look, we have to look at our residents. You know, I, I constantly hear this thing, and Councilmember Valenzuela, you brought this up, that are the all of, are the officers kind of handpicking who they want to pull over, especially in certain communities? I think the number-one issue that we got in our city and around our nation is really the level of income, you know. I, I look at the district that I represent in. To this day, we have extremely prejudiced and discriminatory policies that run through that district. The eighties, the wonderful crack was introduced to that community. Not by coincidence, I mean, we have to face some of the facts, but for us to sit here now and ask for another $1.5 million so we can simply exchange information on a timely fashion when neither the police department or OPA has really shown their commitment to a solution, I, I'm sorry, that's not something that I can stand behind. I, I don't believe OPA and PD, even if we give you the, the personnel that you do need, we're gonna be here another year, OPA complaining, you're not getting the information on time, PD complaining, we don't have enough personnel to get you the information on time. There, there is a clear break between these two departments, and it's really sad, because OPA was brought in to help the police department, to make sure police department has another helping hand, so they can help with their training and, and upholding the law. But unfortunately, I don't see that happening, and based on presentations from OPA, I don't see that happening. The responses from PD, I don't see that happening. So unless we can figure out how these departments can work together as a team, unfortunately, I cannot, I'm a definite no on, on providing more budget and take money from our taxpayers, so we can just hope that the information gap can get passed through on a timely fashion. We have to grow up, we have to act professional, and we need to step up to the plate, and we respect all the parties. I recognize your backgrounds and, and what you bring to the table, but this is the city of Sacramento. We're talking about the taxpayers' money. We're talking about the safety of people, and enough is enough. We need to create policies that protect our residents. We need to help to create policies to protect our residents. This back and forth needs to stop, and for that reason, I'm a no on this extra budget. Thank you.
Right. I'm gonna respond on the back end, but let's get to the other members here. Councilmember Jennings and Mayor Protem Bang.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm, I feel a little different about the approach tonight. I was really pleased to see the work that OPA has done to let us know that the collaborative approach between SPD and OPA is working. I heard that clearly, and I heard our inspector general say, as of right now, I like what I'm seeing. So that says we've come a long way, because it wasn't that way in June. We weren't in that same position, so we've come a long way. And I've heard the Sacramento Police Department go through the 19 recommendations. Eight are in place or updated, 10 are newly adopted, and one is undergoing additional research, but I saw an action plan for all 19 recommendations. And so therefore, I feel a little differently. While you may not be a team that's going to the Super Bowl, it does seem that we are making significant progress, and if we continue to make that progress, we will become a Super Bowl caliber team. I'm in favor of both proposals that are on the table, and I know it's gonna cost, and I don't know exactly how we're going to pay for it, but I know the need is there. When you have a police department of our size and our magnitude, and they don't have a compliance department, an internal compliance department, they don't have that, that is a need that we need to have. It minimizes risk, it helps, gives more capacity. We're not talking about sworn officers, we're talking about people who do the administrative work that really keep the organization moving forward, writing grants, doing different types of things that officers are not doing, but what needs to be done in order to keep any kind of organization moving forward. And as far as OPA is, is concerned, there is no question, you need the manpower. You did two years of the audit as opposed to more. You're dealing with how many staff right now? Two to four? You, you absolutely need more, because you could do more if you do, if you did. And so I, I think both organizations need the staffing in order to be able to complete the work that a city of this size and this magnitude needs, and when they continue to work together, whatever is happening, if, that's in the past, will stay in the past, and we will move forward together as a team, where in a team, we start achieving more because we are acting as a team. I, I appreciate the community advisory group and the work that you did with the police department. I'm sorry that the police review commission could not have been a part of that. That's something that we can work on, and we will work on. There's no question, we'll work on that. But then there's AAELC that's at the table, too. There, there's the policy review committee that's at the table, too. And so I do think we need to realize that there's going to be more than just one group that's at the table, but I think police need to understand that the one that's at the table that should be at the table is the police review commission, and so that, that we can work out, too. Those are the kind of things that we can work out as we build trust in working with each other. So I'm a, I'm in favor of funding both. I'm gonna put that on the city manager to tell me how we can make that happen, how we can build the organizations up, and we can create a city that can be a model for the entire state of California to, to learn from, and we can get the things done we need to get done. So that's where I lie right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. We got Mayor Protem Bang and Councilmember Talamontes.
Thanks, Mayor. I will try to keep my comments short. First, I just want to thank both city departments for their presentation, and just, you know, just want to echo my colleagues from Councilmember Valenzuela, really asking the critical questions of SACPD to Coach Jennings, who's holding space about just the complexity of this issue, and ensuring that our departments have the right amount of staff to do the work that they need to do. And so I think something that really spoke to me was when Laney came up here, and we asked the question, you know, do we have the budget for this? And she said, no. And if we did fund this, it would come out of funding in our out-years. I believe that's what she said, right? City manager's nodding his head. And I also want to remind that the reason why we're also here today is, one, absolutely, we wanted to hear a report back from Chief Lester and PD on the 19 recommendations, and they did that today, but we're also here because Mayor and Council actually did direct Dr. Watson to come back to us, to ask her what actually, what it would take to actually staff of OPA in order for them to do their job. And so I'm mentioning that piece in particular because I want to honor that piece, because, because I believe that was a direction, and we wanted to hear from that. I do acknowledge SACPD that, you know, if they were to do more PRA requests, they, they believe that this is the staff that's needed, right, in order to do the work, to be in full, full compliance, although Chief Lester, you did say that we're in compliance, but in order to maintain the on-level of, the ongoing level of work, these are the additional staff that you'll need in the department. So I think for me in particular, I really want to stay true to what the mayor and council's ask was, and also just given that we don't have dollars for this, and we're just gonna use measure U, whatever dollars are left, and then we're gonna have a negative in out-years, my counter motion on the table is that we actually approve OPA and our city attorneys' requests for the additional staffing, but I actually would like to revisit SACPD's recommendation and their request for the end of the year. Maybe it can come back to budget and audit. I ask this in particular because I think it's really important for mayor and council, if we were to take this audit seriously, is to actually monitor the implementation of the remaining eight recommendations that's still in the process. I think that's really important. And then the other piece is, is really, we, we need to improve, and we need a directive, we need to figure something out structurally, because this relationship with our police, police commission is not working. I think we heard that loud and clear from our vice chair, but I've also heard that from my own commissioner as well. Like, I just reached out to her, and she said she had, she didn't hear anything about the audit to action, and that's just, that's kind of disappointing, right? Our commission, we appoint our commissioners, and they are also our community advocates, and so I think we, there's a long way to go to really improve that relationship. And so I'm not taking the SACPD's request off the table. I actually understand the need for non-officers to actually do the work, so that when 1,000-plus PRA request is coming up, right, we're not having officers do it, but non-officers to actually deliver that work. I get that, but I also don't want to just, you know, increase the PD's budget when we're not improving relationship with the community. I think it's really important that we figure out how to improve that relationship, and the fact that my commissioner didn't know about the audit to action, right, was really concerning to me. I think it's great that we're reaching out to other community members outside of the police commission. I think that's, that's great, Chief Lester. I think we have to lean on all of our community, all our community residents, but I also think it's really important for us to figure out how to build that relationship with the police commission, as well as they are our appointees and the conduit to the public as well. And so that's my motion on the table, is to approve the staffing for OPA and CAO, and remove, and remove PD requests for this motion in particular, but still have it all be on the table, and we'd love to revisit it at the end of the year, because I want to see how the implementation go for the eight remaining recommendations. I think we heard our inspector general say, it's going well, but I, and Councilmember Valenzuela asked a question to Dr. Watson, and Chief Lester, have you both have, have you both met? And the answer is no, right? That's also very concerning, and I want to see those relationships improve. And, and then Councilmember Luloe, you're on the other aisle with me. Usually, we don't agree, but you're like a flat no on this, right, because you want to see the relationship improve. I think that's really the focal point for you, and so I, I hear you on that as well. I think that we need to figure out how to just improve our relationship before we add additional dollars, but I know the mayor and council's request from that audit was that they only did two years, and they weren't able to do more additional years, and we asked her, what will it take to scale up? And so that's what she presented today, and I want to honor that, and so that's the reason why, that's, that's my motion, my counter motion on the table. Thank you.
Well, it's actually the original motion, because there's...
Oh.
It's the main, it's the main motion, second by Councilmember Valenzuela. That's correct.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know if there might be a substitute motion, but let's hear from Councilmember, Mr. City Manager.
Just very, well, just very quickly, while, Mayor Protem, just to clarify, the, the request that was made, or the direction from the council from the audit, was in fact to have OPA come back and determine what their need was to complete their work, but also for the police department to come back with the resources they need as well, to respond timely. What we've done is I've talked to the city attorney to see what her needs are as well, to have a holistic approach, to say, okay, if we're gonna move forward and try and make things better as we go forward, I think it's, it's, it's a package, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure how this council's gonna respond or vote ultimately, but I will tell you that if some or all of these are not approved, in, things are just gonna slow down. So the expectation that things come back, you know, timely and, and all these things, because as you heard from the chief, we're pulling from throughout the department, whether it's from sergeants and lieutenants and captains and deputy chiefs, they're taking , it's time off task for what they should be doing.
Okay. Can I, can I ask one more question? Maybe this is directed to you, City Manager, and maybe Chief Lester. I know during budget season, we talked about the vacancy. Curious to know, can we use the vacancies that we have in the PD department to position, to, to fund those positions that you requested?
Well, I can have... Well, I, I can have the chief talk to it, but again, what we discussed last time around, I don't know if Laney, maybe you can come in here, too. We had a, a matrix that showed how the vacancies were, were being used for the overtime and how that was being spent. Laney, you want to, do you remember the, I don't remember the numbers on that sheet that we shared the last time around at budget? Or even chief?
That question would be, how much of that overtime is being spent on this compliance stuff? Because I think that was part of the discussion, if I recall. So I don't know if you...
It's part of the compliance, but also, as you recall, in the last couple of weeks, when we improved, when we approved the, the safe ground sighting piece, the enforcement piece, the direction was to use overtime in order to staff that model. So we're, we're having, we're expecting the, the department to work on a whole range of issues here, running on overtime, and we want to be in compliance with all the rules and regs that, the state legislation and whatnot. And so I'm, I'm just saying that it's, the chief said it. It's not that it's not doable, we just need to manage expectations from this council and from the community about how quickly we can get to it.
Again, Laney Millstein, Assistant City Manager. I don't remember the numbers directly off the page, but I will say, over the last three years, we've demonstrated, and we've demonstrated to this council, that the Police Department has more than spent the value of their vacancy savings on providing services that, that we have asked of them to respond to calls and address workload, and that we have a strategy around vacancy savings with our labor contracts. So we've spent the money once, we're going to spend the money twice, and we can't, and now we've, we're spending more than, based on the commitments we've made on homelessness, so we have spent the money three times. And so we have to be very careful when we identify vacancy savings in paying for any of this, because that money is already spent.
Okay, we have other speakers here. Councilmember Maple, are we done, Mayor Protam?
I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Maple, then Councilmember Jennings again.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to, again, appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. I wasn't originally planning on speaking, but, you know, this has been a really robust discussion. Appreciate the comments from all of my colleagues, and I have to say, I, I share some of the disappointment about the lack of coordination with the Police Review Commission. It's something that's been asked for quite a bit, I think, by different members of this body, and, you know, I, just to not, to not have them be a part of the conversation in this audit to action, I didn't even know about this group. I think it's great to talk with community, no knock on anyone as a part of that group at all. And in fact, some, at least one was from the Oak Park community, which is amazing. But, you know, we also appointed Police Review Commissioners because they represent our communities, too. And, you know, I just would really love to see that, more of that coordination. I'd love to see a member of the Police Department at those meetings, that's been requested several times. And so, yeah, I just, I find that, that particular component of this a little disappointing personally, and I'd love to see that improve moving forward. What I recall from, from our meeting, and I think Mayor Protam brought this up as well, is that, you know, what I supported was, was Mayor Protam making a request of OPSA, of what you needed to, to staff up, and not just in terms of, you know, the compliance piece, but also being able to do the work that was set out for you, that, that is enshrined in our, in our charter, that you've not been able to do thus far in the entirety of the office, because the staffing hasn't been there. And you can really see those disparities when you look at the different offices, and even charter offices in our city, and what those staffing levels look like. So I'm particularly interested in, from an overall perspective, ensuring that, that you have the resources that you need, because that's a lot of what I heard from the previous conversation we had during the audit. I am going to be honest, that I'm, I'm struggling with additional positions for PD, not because I don't believe that compliance is important, that used to be part of my job title, I think it's incredibly important. But I'm just struggling that we can't, you know, I, I hear, I hear this on, on savings, but, you know, one of the things that I've struggled with is this direct connection between, on overtime. I'd love to learn more about what the decision matrix is around overtime. I know just personally in my district, I've seen, and other places in the city, I've seen certain calls where, you know, there's an extraordinary amount of people out there, and it seems a little unwarranted, but, you know, I'm not an expert, so I do want to learn about how those decisions are made, but right now I'm feeling uncomfortable making this kind of decision. So I just, I'll leave my comments at that.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to come back up to put a substitute motion on the floor in reference to the point that I made when I spoke, as far as funding both requests from the police...
All three.
All three requests. And I, I want to put that on the table as a substitute motion at this point in time.
Is there a second on that substitute motion? Is there a second on the substitute motion? I'll second the motion. Very good. The motion's been seconded. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. As we can all see, this is not something that is easily decided amongst us, that we may have to think about. It's not an either/or, if there is a happy medium in, in how, how we move forward. I do want to call out and thank our African American Employee Association for coming here, because they've met with all of us as a council and have brought up issues of concern that while this audit specifically talks about our Sacramento PD, they've also highlighted that we also need to be mindful of who we are as a city, and how important it is that we handle issues of concern that not only address how PD acts, but also managers and employees here. So I would hope that we could potentially put a plug in it, and that that is something that is discussed at budget, because I know right now, we're really looking at OPSA, SAC PD, and the City Attorney's Office, but I think they've brought up a really valid point. And if I need to put in the whatever reference proposal that this is discussed at budget and audit, I would like to see at least this item discussed in budget and audit, so you can get ahold of my office, and we can figure out what language we're putting in. But I think that's something that's really important, is to follow through when employees find opportunities that we as a council can have a legitimate discussion at the appropriate So, quick question, I don't know if it would be chief, it's both for the chief and, and Dr. Watson. One of the things I was looking at when I was, I was reading the report, when you look at compliance and audit, what happens if there's a conflict between you're saying there's a new state law, and here's how we're going to comply, and OPSA does a review and says, no, this isn't? Like, do you already have a standard or a practice in place of how we handle if, especially we've got an inspector general, and now you're asking for more of a governmental affairs compliance? How do we figure it out if, if we're to move forward, like, getting rid of those conflicts?
Well, I think, like all departments, we really lean heavily on our city attorney, and I think that's been part of our need over the last several years. Some of the legislation, to speak frankly, is not very clear, and not particularly easily understood by even, you know, even our department. And so it's pretty common that we send requests, we send, whether it's a PRA, whether it's an SB 2 or 1421 item, over to our city attorney's office for interpretation. And I certainly can't speak for OPSA, but that is, I know who we go to when there is a question about how the law should be applied, as opposed to having individual departments, especially when the city attorney does represent the city, make their own individual determination. So can't think, can't really think of an issue right now where we've had that type of conflict, but to answer your question, if we were to have a different interpretation of a law, my first step would be to take it to the city attorney for assistance, and then, and figure out where we go from there.
Thank you. One other question. You know, as we look at, we have disagreements here on council, and, and I'm hearing more so on SAC PD. And I'm throwing out ideas of where could potentially be a happy medium, where we might be able to, to come together. With SAC PD, would it be more of, I know you're asking for four positions, but what if we start just with the governmental affairs individual? To start getting somebody in? While we look at the administrative support and others, I think it is kind of important, with as much as public safety is an item that is looked at at the legislature, and there is a lot of legislation coming through, that having somebody specific in that position, I think is really important. And then maybe the discussion can happen further at budget and audit, of what does it look like? As well as you can continue to work on your relationship with OPSA, that I've heard. You know, I don't know if that's a happy medium for some of my other colleagues, but I'll just throw that out there. If people are not willing to fund all of SAC PD, do we just start with the governmental affairs and move forward? I just want to hear, you know, I think this is a dialogue that is, is very valid, that we need to have. And then the same also goes to, like, OPSA. If, if it's, it's, do you really need those six positions? Because I also hear Laney, like, I think you need those six positions, but my problem is, is two years from now, what if we have to cut? Like, is, where, where is the happy medium of, we do what we need to do to move forward, but also not fully overextend ourselves, where we start something, but we then have to pull back? And I don't know the answer to that, but listening to everybody, it does bring up where we do have a lot of budget concerns and items that we do have to look at, what does this look like in the full picture? I really appreciate OPSA and all the work they did, our city manager, I know our city attorney, because, you know, heaven forbid with all the legislation. I don't know if this is the right package right now with all the questions. Can we get half the package, three-fourths of the package? What is it that might make it so that we can, we can get there? But I, I just want to thank you guys for all the work. I want to thank Lieutenant, or can I, can I say?
He, when we have a vacancy, he's next to be, yes.
He's next in line. I've, I've had the pleasure of working with Lieutenant Buchanan, and I, I really think he is the right person to help bridge and create a, a better relationship with OPSA, and that is my hope as we move forward. I don't know the answer, I am supportive of what has kind of been in front of me, but I am very concerned about the funding and the dollars, knowing that we also still haven't passed our employee, and finished bargaining with our employee groups. And what does all of that, that look like? So I don't have an answer, but I just wanted to say, I appreciate it, but I do have, like, there's balance concerns.
I think those are very important questions that have all been raised, so thank you, and I'm sure Dr. Watson will speak on, on behalf of her department. What we have asked for, it wasn't like we just threw it on the wall. I have to say that Captain Chan and Lieutenant Buchanan have done extensive research on this. We know, you know, the difficulties with a budgetary ask and asking additional staff, especially for the Police Department. Having said that, you know, we, we, I think we chose very wisely, working with HR on what we could do. To answer your question, could we just have a government affairs manager? I feel like we would be setting that person up to fail, that would be like taking over an office without having the staff to do the job the right way. I want to be clear, this isn't a matter of expanding just our current abilities, that would be adding staff. This is a new way of doing things, whether it's the MEU audit, the sex assault kit audit, you see where we really struggle to try and meet all of those mandates. And not only do we need to do that better, but we also need to be more forward-thinking, and we need to be proactive about looking at trends and looking at ways to strategize, and really manage risk for the city. And that's what I hope, that's what I'm really trying to kind of express here. You know, if it was just a matter of trying to get a PRA out two weeks faster, I would be coming back and asking for As, and I would say that. This is a different, kind of a different program altogether, and one that I think would not only benefit our city, but certainly our community in a lot of ways. And so it's not just a matter of adding additional staff so we can be faster, it's about just being more proactive, being more modern, and really bringing in the best practices, which is something that we really strive for. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Watson.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan, your first question.
I want to make sure I understood it. Were you talking about disagreements over legislation? Or were you talking about disagreements in the process, and how OPSA reviews, and if they have a disagreement with something, how that gets handled if we do not agree? Is that what you were...
It's kind of the same, same but different to a certain extent. Like, if there's a new law, and SAC PD comes down with an interpretation of how to comply with it, you end up with a complaint and do an audit, and like, say, oh, how they're complying with that, and how they interpreted that doesn't work. How do we, how do we figure that, that out? Which, of course, I'm always going to rely on the city attorney, but I also know the wealth of knowledge within your office.
Yes, we, we've had some issues with, with disagreement, but if we have to get to a point where we have to go all the way to the end of the structure, and how we handle conflict, then it's between myself and the city manager to determine what the end result will be. Whether we will go with what the Police Department is saying, or the fire chief is saying, because we have oversight over both. If I can't agree, if myself and the fire chief, or myself and the police chief do not agree on a particular case, a particular recommendation, whatever it is, it's between myself and the city manager to come together and figure out, and the indecision, because he represents, and he, those are his subordinates, he determines what the answer is. So both of us report to all of you all, so we come together, we'll figure it out, and then the answer is, is whatever he decides that the answer is. So for, for that part, for what you were asking about the, the budgetary concern, the cost, it, it is a cost. What I'll say is, is that I was directed to come here with the cost. So I'm not saying that you have to approve it. What I'm saying is, is you ask, what is going to be necessary for OPSA to do every A through F, is what it was established to do? That, that's what it is. Whether we do that now, whether we do that four years from now, OPSA's been in existence since 1999, and I think that's a lot of the, the tension that some of you all are talking about. You've had an OPSA who hasn't criticized anything. You bring people in with a lot of background and know what they're looking at, well then we're going to point out things that we say need improvement. That's where attention comes in, when you're overlooking someone. It's not that there's a problem because someone doesn't like each other. It's, it's hard for someone to come in and look over your shoulder and tell you, this needs to be done. That's a hard pill to swallow, but as leaders, that's something we're, we have to do. And the sheer position of what I'm in right now, that's what I'm supposed to do. Look at what you're doing and tell you, no, we can do that better because of, and lay out the evidence for it. That's it. My staff would love to have more bodies. If we can't do it, we can't do it. My job was to come here and tell you what we need in order to try to get it done.
Which I really appreciate you being able to do that, reiterating to us why we're here, because sometimes I think we can lose a little bit of focus. My one thing is, if we do approve the staffing for OPSA, actually written into its charter, is that OPSA is, has the liaison and is the staff to the Sacramento Police Review Commission. I would like to see that happen. I've been hearing, we, we need to figure out, it has been a point of contention within the city, be it, we need to relook at, does that go to SAC PD and their governmental affairs? But if OPSA does get the positions, is that something that is within one of theirs that, but we need it not to be? Mindy is not qualified to, to talk about police policy, laws, whatnot. She is highly qualified for what she does, but they, there is a reason we have the Sacramento Police Review Commission, and since I was elected, this is something that we've needed to figure out. So if we do move forward with staffing, I think we need to include finding that final answer of who is and not taking, it's the other person's responsibility.
Great question, because that has been something that has been one of the real pinch points.
I think you also heard Chief Lester talk about one of these positions coming forward, being a liaison to the commission as well, as other, other duties.
I, I just, I'm asking this because I also want, like, my other colleagues, because we've all heard this, of like, instead of talking about it, finding a resolution that actually comes to fruition. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Telemontes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to support this budget ask, but I never want to hear that we have a staffing problem ever again, when we request data, or when we have asks here on the council. We need to be better and work on our relationships, have coffee, and when we request to meet, not just say, hey, I'm willing to meet you via Zoom. Like, I want to meet you in person. That's important, to build a relationship, not just with us as a council, with each other, but with the community. Go out into the community and like, have town halls, let's continue those conversations. We ask for more data, we ask for more transparency and more progress on, on reform, and to work with our Police Review Commission. So with these assigned positions, I hope we do that. At the same time, I ask the Police Review Commission to also respect our city staff. Respect our city staff. So, at the end of the day, Mayor, what's, what's the motion on the table right now? The third motion?
Here's a, Councilmember Jennings is the lead motion, or the substitute motion, I should say. So that will be, we'll call the, I'll call the role in a moment, but thank you.
Okay, so that's my, my final story, just have more conversations, please.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, you know...
I think that, you know, a lot of tonight has been about the frustration about the, the direct communication. And one key piece that I brought up before and in past, and just my experience when I served on a commission, and again, it was a planning commission, but we had the policy expert there to respond on behalf of the bureaucracy with expertise. And so, Mr. City Manager, to me, that's, that's a key piece that has to happen if we move forward tonight. Can you commit to that?
Yes.
Good. Because I don't, I think we've gone around this, this frustration over and over again. And for, it doesn't matter which one of our departments, or which one of our commissions or review commissions, they, they are, they are laymen who volunteer for an opportunity. And so I just want to make sure that moving forward with this, we can alleviate that, that frustration. And, and I, I think, you know, Councilmember Kaplan, again, brought some, a point here that when we have budget and audit, and I, I'll leave it up to the, the mayor who's the chair, but we need to be thinking about how this and other requests are, are moving forward. My understanding is that the motion, the, the way that the staff report is drafted is that you'll look at it based upon what, what we currently have. So if there are, if there are red flags, I want to, I want to make sure that you're going to come back, at least the budget and audit, on budget constraints.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For all its imperfections, I believe the main motion tonight will allow the city to say that we are putting significant additional resources into performing more oversight. More oversight on the, on the range of issues that we want OPSA and our police department, sometimes at odds, sometimes collaboratively, to respond to and to make better. The, the police resources, I mean, really, look, Councilmember Kaplan's questions were very fair, but beyond the Director of Government Affairs, you're talking about an administrative, two administrative analysts and an administrative technician. Really, is that, that's what we're fighting about? I know this is ideological, you know, it gets ideological here about the police department. I know nothing about the police overtime budget. As we ask the department to be involved in a constructive way in dealing, and I'm going to say it again, open-air drug dealing in tent encampments, and the crimes that are going on there, that's going, that's going to necessitate a lot of overtime, and, and we're all going to demand it. So where, where is this overtime money that, that we all think we can create? Here's, the bottom line is this, it's just reality, like it or not. If we don't approve the main motion, the oversight is going to be slower, the response is going to be slower. That's why I favor the main motion. Excuse me, the subs, I'm sorry, the subs.
You're going to support my motion.
I'm sorry, I love you too, but, and I do. I'm sorry, I mean the, I mean the subs, I mean the substitute motion, all right? Councilmember Valenzuela, do you want the last word?
Just a brief, brief one, because I appreciate, well, I just want to respond, I guess, in part to your comment, because you mentioned the word, it's ideological to oppose these new positions, and I don't think it's ideological to ask for transparency from the department that is the largest user of our general fund resources. And this is a question, I get asked this a lot, I'm not really that ideological when it comes to police, I'm really not. I'm looking at data, and I'm looking at what I see and I don't see, and I'm asking questions. And when I can't get an answer to a question, like, where does $20 million in potential overtime, like, unspent vacant position money go? Like, that's, that's a question I should be able to answer, because that's money, as my colleague mentioned earlier, that hard paying, hardworking taxpayers are giving to our city in public trust. And I have a responsibility to know where that money goes. And every time, it feels like, and we said this before, we just said this last week, I think you said this actually, Mayor, every time the police department comes to us and asks us for more, we give it to them. And, and I'm not saying that, I, I'm saying that it's important that we ask the question. We would ask the question, if anybody else coming to us asking us for $100 or $1,000, we'd say, how are you going to spend it? Why do you need it? Where is it going? What did you do with the last $1,000 I gave you? These are basic questions that we should be able to ask. And I know I'm a broken record, because it's still, we still have not gotten there. And, and I think that's something that the public demands, that my district demands, and that I don't think is ideological, but it's just good governance.
Well, let me, let me respond. I, I apologize for the use of the term then, I guess. I think you have every right to ask those questions, and, and you do a great job of it. I do think that the debates around policing on this council do boil down to, it's, and sometimes to basic views of whether or not we have a police department that is working the way we want it to work. And we all have different positions. Mine is that the police department needs real improvement here, and that, and that we have a, a very good police force at the same time. These are the kinds of actions that I think are going to enable us to actually get to where we want to go, which is to be able to have more independent oversight over, over a department. That's what they, that's what OPSA gave us in June. We want more of it, and we want the department to be able to respond. Disagree. On the substitute motion, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. So the substitute motion was by Jennings and second by Steinberg, which was to adopt the staff recommendation as proposed. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Hi.
Councilmember Laloe?
No.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Maple?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Guerra?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. All right. That completes the council agenda. Are there council ideas and questions? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, Mayor, I need to make an AB 1234 report, because I traveled to St. Louis last week for a conference by an organization called Local Progress, which is when local electives get together from across the country. So I wanted to just report that out. It was a great opportunity to exchange ideas, talk about what we're working on in Sacramento, hear what other cities are working on, and I look forward to that continuing. And to my colleagues who weren't able to join us this year, the next year's convening is in Oakland, so we have no excuse. We're doing this, we're going. And then my second announcement is just 9-1-6 Day. I'm sure we're all going to be talking about stuff we're doing this Saturday, because it is the actual 9-1-6 Day. We will be at Zapata Park, in partnership with the Mexican Consul General, SMD, Rayleys, and our Parks Commissioner, Kai Herman. And we are going to be reviving the basketball courts, doing painting, doing mulching, all the things, and so I hope folks will come out and join us. We think we already have about 30 volunteers, but there's plenty of space for more. So that is 9:30 a.m. on Saturday at 9:05 E Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Mayor Protem Vang?
Sorry, the mayor was talking to me. His fault. Okay. I just have two, three announcements. As you know, this Saturday is September 16th, 9-1-6, and there has been numerous 9-1-6 Day led by our parks and community enrichment commissioners. But this Saturday in particular actually falls on 9-1-6, and Vice Chair Janine Gaines, District 8 Commissioner, is leading one of the 9-1-6 Day at Valley High Park. And so we're going to be painting benches, repainting the backboard of the baseball diamond field, spreading mulch, planting trees, and so asking everyone to come out. It's this Saturday, September 16th, from 9:00 to 12:00. There'll be refreshments, gloves, everything, so come out, and you can register for this at www.hartenhustle.org/916day. Again, that's hartenhustle.org/916day. So if you're looking for something to do Saturday, and you want to come to South SAC, you got love for South SAC, come out to Valley High, it's going to be lots of fun. And then also, on Sunday, right after that, the next day, at the Pennell Community Center, we're doing a lowrider car show presented by Chef Mike and the Chew Catering in Meadowview. There's going to be beautiful car from our lowriders, food vendors, and community resources at the Pennell Community Center, so really encouraging folks to come out. Again, that's on Sunday, this Sunday at 11:00 a.m. And then just wanted folks to save our third annual South SAC Festival on Saturday, October 21st, from 11:00 to 3:00, at Shasta Park. It's going to be lit, so come through, friends, family, babies, music, food, art, it's going to be lots of fun, so really encouraging folks to come out to that. And then also want to do one more, I have one more, I thought that was the last one. The last one is, I'm actually partnering with the fierce leader north of me in D-5, Councilwoman Maple. We're teaming up for a South SAC Union Job Fair presented by the Sacramento Central Labor Council, but I really want to give a shout out to D-4, because they started that first, and then we were like, we need to do it too. And so we're having one in South SAC at the Florin Light Rail Station. So come through, save the date, that's October 11th, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. And those are all of my updates. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Vang, appreciate that. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So in concert with the 9-1-6, but I'm having mine on 9-1-5 for 9-1-6. So this Friday, in partnership with local Girl Scouts, my Parks Commissioner, Odette Ford, and West Shore Homeowners Association, among others, come out to Blackbird Park Garden Cleanup from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then also on Saturday, two events. Farmer's Market is going on, Yoga in the Park from 9:00 to 10:00, and Farmer's Market until 12:30. And then at night, for the first time, we have a new community, North Lake, which is a little cut off from I-5 and 99, but we are holding Movie in the North Lake Community Park, which we are going to be watching, one of my favorite, Secret Life of Pets. Activities start at 5:30, movie begins at dusk, so come join us.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I want to thank all those who came out last Saturday for the 9-1-6 tree planting in Williamland Park. We had over 300 volunteers come out to do the tree planting. We were excited and pumped, and my staff did a great job, and I just want to thank them. I couldn't be there, but they sent me all the pictures, so incredible job of replacing those trees that we lost during the storm, and the community really came out and showed out, so want to thank them for that. Also want to take this time to invite you to the Trucks and Such event, the September Trucks and Such, take place on Friday, the 15th. That's at Garcha Bend Park in the Pocket Neighborhood. You can bring your loved ones, your picnic blankets, your comfortable chairs, and you'll have an evening of music and incredible food from SACMOFO food trucks, and you'll just have a great time with all the constituents from the D-7 area. Also, the Elk Lodge Weekly Farmer's Market is taking place every Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can explore the diverse selection of fresh, organic produce, delightful bakery treats, vibrant flowers, fragrant candles, local honey, and much, much more. You can bring your entire family out there, even your furry friends included, to enjoy the music and all the incredible food offerings throughout the day. So come on out, it's at Riverside Boulevard and Florin Road, the Weekly Farmer's Market at the Oaks Lodge. And the last announcement, we're going to have a ribbon cutting at the South Sacramento Parkway Trail Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. It's a project off the vital, is, is a vital off-street shared-use connection that will connect people walking, bicycling from Meadowview, District 8 Meadowview?
Oh, yeah.
All the way to Sacramento, to the Sacramento River, including Garcha Bend Park. Imagine walking and rolling and whatever else you want to do, all the way through the park, through the, to movie nights and jazz events and much, much more. So we enjoy, invite you to join us for the ribbon cutting Friday, September the 29th, at 9:00 a.m. And you can visit our social media page for more information and details about all the announcements in District 7. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Got a lot going on this coming weekend, so of course, I know many of my colleagues will mention this, it's 9-1-6 Day on Saturday, and so our District 5 Commissioner, Lindsay King, and her team, along with our office, will be hosting a tree planting and park cleanup at Woodbine Park, so that starts at 9:00 a.m. If you would like to volunteer, we are still accepting people to register, so you can go on sacd5.com/916day to sign up. Please do come by, starting at 9:00 a.m. And then you can then roll straight on over to the Florin Road Beautification Block Party, so that's going to take place at Florin Square, located 3680 Florin Road. There's going to be a mural kickoff, there's going to be music, there's going to be food, it's going to be great. Go have fun. And then the next morning, on the 17th, you can roll by Caruchas and Coffee at the Franklin Center, 5383 Franklin Boulevard, and that's hosted by the Franklin Boulevard Business District. Going to be a lot of fun, there's going to be some cool lowriders out there, as, as I imagine. So come by if you, if you have time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple, and Caruchas and Cafe, love that one, might join you there. All right, District 6, we have a, a number of great, also 9-1-6 Day. We're going to start off at 4:00 at Oki Park, and we're going to be doing some tree planting, some mulching. We're going to be also recognizing the Oki family, you know, some of the family early on committed to our community, great, they were also great members, public servants in our community. And right after that, the firefighters are going to be flipping some hamburgers and hot dogs and feeding all our workers and volunteers in preparation for the movie night afterwards. So come out to Oki Park in College Greens for 9-1-6 Day at 4:00. We're going to work it, work the evening, and then relax with some movies and some hot dogs and some popcorn. Want to thank always Annette Deglow and the College Glen Neighborhood Association for always popping the popcorn. Also, I want to encourage folks in the Talek, in South Tahoe Park community, that Mark Twain Elementary is going to have its first welcome, night, welcome back and night the school event, pumping up the spirit. We're starting off at 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. Come out, we're just trying to enjoy, whether your kids go there or not, to support the local school. We want to welcome and recognize the new principal, Dominic Campos. Thank you, Principal Campos, for your service to the community. And with that, Madam Clerk, that concludes comments from the council.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have eight speakers in chambers and then 10 online. The first is Jared Landreth.
Madam Clerk, as the first speaker comes up, can you make the announcements on public comment?
Hi, I'm Gerald Landreth. I've been here three times before. Why I'm here is because of the problem that's down on El Camino and Altos Avenue with all the tents down there. There's a lot of drugs going on in those tents. The police have come down, and they've gotten some of the cars out of front, our front, because they just park all over the, like, where the trail is, and they got barbecues out in the trail, and it's just, it's a dangerous situation out there. I mean, I've talked to a lot of the homeowners, and they just want it cleaned up. And they, they didn't really sign up to, to have a tent in front of their house. So it is a residential area, so I don't really understand why that's going on. When I asked the police department about that, and they said, well, there's really nothing that we can really do about this. You have to go to the city council and find out, our hands are tied, we can't force these people out of here, even though they're trespassing and they're loitering, we can't do anything about it. So that's what I just wanted to say about that, but it's, it's just, it's a problem, it needs to be taken care of. And most of the homeowners out there are just irate, and so is ARCO, AMPM, so.
Mario, is, do you have anyone that could see this gentleman? Because I know he was here also last week.
Yes, when I was there, the week before that, too.
With the same concerns. And it seems like a week has passed, and those concerns have not been met yet.
I'm going to get in touch with him after the.
Okay. First of all, I appreciate you coming here and taking the time, and you have extremely valid points, and hopefully after your conversation with the city assistant manager, we can shed some light on this growing issue in, in our district.
I just kind of wonder, because I came from a different area, I came from Brentwood, and there was just no homeless. They just don't allow it in their city at all. It's just, they don't tolerate that at all. And especially in the residential area. They don't allow that in a residential area at all, like out here.
Yeah, thank you, sir, your time is complete. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daniel Potowski, and while he comes up, just want to remind that, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. Council rules and procedure outline decorums expected in chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip, and Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on item that is in the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right, could I have the overhead? Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers, Dan Piskowski. I'm here tonight on behalf of Trees for Sacramento. We are a volunteer nonprofit working toward the preservation, protection, and enhancement of Sacramento's urban forest. I want to bring up about a process with projects. urban forest. I want to bring up about a process with projects. So, there's this project here at 707 Commons Drive, and they approached us. They needed some help on it. It's a 1.5-acre site. There's 25 trees on it. There's 12 protected trees. And the one with the arrow, that's a 90-inch diameter coast redwood. That is the biggest single trunk coast redwood in the city of Sacramento. Now, this project got started last October, and when they questioned Urban Forestry about, what are they going to do about the trees? And they said, well, the application was incomplete. The developer plans on removing all the trees, but he didn't have a tree planting plan as part of the application. This past April, we keep pushing on it, what are they going to do about the trees? Because they've already gone through some redesigns in order to save the process. And so, what they're saying is that the tree permit process is concurrently with the entitlements. Well, when I was City Arbors, on all the projects, what happened was the trees got addressed immediately in the very beginning. The developers didn't have to spend a lot of money on arbors reports. They just gave us an inventory. I went out, looked at the site, said which trees need to be saved. Sometimes I met with developers before they even bought the property, so they knew what was happening. What Trees for Sacramento is asking is to change the process that when a project comes in, the trees are addressed at the very beginning. So, then we know what's going to happen, instead of, they're waiting until the end. And I passed out this little ordinance, because what happens is they get all the entitlements, and then Urban Forestry says, per the ordinance, we can't preserve these trees. We'd like to, but we can't. And we had proposed changing the language, but we were fought against that by city staff. They didn't want to change the language. So, we're just asking, address the trees at the very beginning.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Bob Kay, then Wendell Brown, then CJ.
Mr. Assistant City Manager, is it possible for Assistant City Manager Moore to potentially chat with this gentleman about the specific issue? And thank you for submitting this ordinance. I know we're looking at the Urban Forestry Plan, so just want to thank you for giving this document. But I see him in the back room there, probably. Yeah, thank you.
Bob Kay. I don't see Bob. Wendell Brown. CJ. Following CJ is Charles Fost, then Keon Bliss.
Good evening.
Because you believe your way works, and because you refuse to hear our solutions, I would just like to give, I would just like to give a kind of state of address, or I guess the state of kind of what we're seeing on the ground as activists and advocates and general community members. 12-year-olds being sexually assaulted by a 17-year-old in community center programs. I elevated this issue to management. Nothing was done. Oak Park Community Center. That was when I was working as a recreation aide. Trans unhoused youth being sheltered with multiple rapists and then being exited from their program after contacting law enforcement after being raped. Sacramento LGBT Community Center, Wind Youth Services, The Grove, et cetera. Trans youth being exited from program because they couldn't walk up two flights of stairs to make their housing meetings. They had an autoimmune disorder that weakened the connective tissue of their joints, causing them to dislocate from the weight of walking. No accommodations were offered. Sacramento LGBT Community Center. Staff fired for insubordination after alerting management that the previous policy was an ADA violation. Sacramento LGBT Community Center. This isn't, that staff wasn't me, by the way. I just left, because that was shitty. Shelter programs that only allow residents at night, therefore leaving people on the streets during the day. Now for me to tell you a little bit about myself. While I was sleeping on a box spring in a bedroom infested with roaches with no working plumbing because our landlord refused to fix anything, and I still was expected to keep grinding, head full of lice, no food, and I was still expected to become a productive, successful member of society. Had I grown up to be a sex worker, a drug dealer, some of these unhoused constituents that you all complain and turn your backs on, SAC PD would be there right away. However, when I told multiple people, random adults, nonprofit advocates, and police, they all failed me because your way doesn't work. I urge you to make good use of this next year.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Charles Fost, then Keon Bliss.
Good evening. I had some stuff to say about the sex trafficking, human trafficking in general, and slavery that I see in the homeless community, but the mayor and city manager are gone, so it's kind of pointless to address anything like that. So, I think what really needs to be addressed is why they're going, which is that they're being harassed, well, the mayor in specific is being harassed. So, I'm hoping that there's something that can be done about that, and if you guys are working on that or not, maybe having like a two or three-minute delay and having people filter through the phone calls. If that's something that isn't, something that can be addressed by the city for legal reasons, if we need to form an outside nonprofit that handles that for you guys. And if so, I've talked to a few other advocates in the community to be willing to work on that with you guys, having a different group that listens to the phone calls, records them, and then anything that, you know, they're dropping anti-Semitic or racist comments, they just don't go to the meeting. They don't get playback in the meeting. So, that's something that you guys need set up that isn't city-run, that's just an outside organization doing it. There are people that are willing to do that for you guys. So, just let people know that that's what you want, if that's what you want, if you want someone else to handle the phone calls, and like I said, record them and delete them if they're just going to troll you guys. Anyway, good evening.
May I give your comments? Keon Bliss, then Devonte Morris.
I'm going to read the letter that the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission submitted to the full city council and approved in June 13th, 2023. Dear Mayor, Councilmembers and City Manager, on behalf of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, we write to respectfully request that you, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager clarify the required engagement of the Sacramento Police Department with respect to the commission. The commission has long advocated that rules be clearly stated in policy. As you may recall, the commission's 2020 internal work group recommended that the city of Sacramento require SPD to have a police liaison present at all the SCPRC monthly meetings to respond to questions and information requests. SPD liaison to meet with the SCPRC Chair, Vice Chair, and OPSA staff to address requests and respond directly instead of having to use OPSA as an intermediary, and SPD police chief or their representative to meet with the SCPRC at a minimum once a year and prior to the submission of the annual reports to the city council to provide feedback to the SCPRC about its recommendations. At the March 22nd, 2022 meeting, as part of the discussion, item one, the city council met to take up seven out of 45 recommendations, including those listed above. It was the commission's understanding that the recommendation to have the SPD present at all SCPRC meetings was approved by the city council by a vote of nine to zero. However, since May 2022, SPD liaison has been absent from SCPRC meetings and was subsequently informed by the city manager's office that an assistant city manager would instead serve as SPD's liaison. What additional direction is needed to the city manager to ensure this recommendation is carried out? Direct interaction between the SCPRC and SPD is of utmost importance for improving community participation in reviewing and recommending police department policies, practices, and procedures. Maintaining an SPD liaison's presence signals to the community and commission members that the work of SCPRC is-
Your comments. Your time is complete. Devonte Morris is our next speaker. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Keon Bliss, you have exceeded your speaking time. Please stop speaking and take your seat.
Madam Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Mister Bliss, by continuing to speak, you are disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting. You are now in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure. If you do not stop, we will order you to leave the meeting. Do you understand the warning? Mister Bliss, please return to your seat. Our next speaker is Devonte Morris. Ms. Morris.
Hello, my name is Devonte Morris, and I'm here because I'm requesting the city do something about residential parking as far as near the student living apartments and the affordable housing apartments. And on the 65th Street, there's plenty of vacant parking lots just sitting there, getting trashed up. There's weeds growing everywhere. They're just sitting there vacant. There's a big parking lot in front of the Element Student Living Center. There's a parking lot on Ramona Boulevard. But yet, when our cars get towed, and we can't afford to get them out, they get permanently taken forever. And we need transportation to get to work and school and stuff. Transportation is very important in our society. And of course, the government knows that. You guys have no solutions when our vehicles do get taken, and these property managers take advantage of the right to tow laws. And we need, we residents, we need a place to park our vehicles safely. I've been here talking about this since last year, since you guys started coming back here and doing these councils. And I tried talking with the city manager. You guys said that there's nothing that can be done, but there's plenty of improvements that need to be made in Sacramento regarding residential parking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is online. I have 10 speakers. Lambert Davis. Mister Davis, if you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert, and it's, first of all, I want to send a shout out to the Sacramento Bee. I hope they're listening and didn't leave. But they've done a wonderful job covering the city manager. They've done about three stories, but the only story they haven't done is the violation of the Brown Act every city council meeting. It's called the City Manager's Report. The city of Sacramento would know more if that report was forced off the agenda or to be forced to be given to us at the end of the night. And the Sacramento Bee said, the jig is up. That's what those, that's their language. The jig is up. Now, the city manager has five assistants. You mean to tell me six people cannot put together a city manager's report, and they all make six figures? I bet you I could put the report together if you paid me six figures. I bet you I'd have it ready every week, and I probably could do it by myself. It's almost as though the city is begging you to file a lawsuit against them, as though they're immune from lawsuits. They just settled a lawsuit with a man for $26 million and bought a building from the same man for $8 million. They could have taken $4 million of that and given that to four, and then given the other four to my cheesecake business. And I bet you there wouldn't have been a scandal. We would have hired people. A computer cannot make a chees-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nick. Nick, if you'll unmute.
Hello, counsel, and thank you for your time. I'd like to address this flyer that I found recently in my driveway. It has an infograph of Joe Biden's cabinet showing that it's comprised of 85-
Madam Clerk, please admonish the speaker to speak within the purview of the council.
Thank you. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that members of the public may address the city council on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Please proceed if you have comments under the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento.
WatchEuropa.com. That's-
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kate. Kate, if you'll unmute.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
All right. Kate Hikes here, 14 Oak Street, Unit 88. My city's changing for the worse. It used to be a nice place with picket fences. Now it's natty-datty cans and dirty needles in the grass. I used to walk barefoot, and now I can't. Why are the police being abused when they're just doing their jobs putting down dirty knickers?
Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Richard. Richard, if you'll unmute. Doesn't appear Richard's going to unmute. Next speaker is Jared.
Yes, hello.
It appears we've already had that speaker. The next speaker is Norman.
Hello, I just wanted you all to know that it's really disgusting the way you get up and leave, and you don't even pay attention to anything anybody's saying. You're a complete embarrassment. I hope you all get voted out.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jeffrey.
Can you hear me?
We can.
So, it's crazy to me that I listen to you guys talk for two, three hours during the night, and all these different people calling into voice their opinion about different topics, you know, and none of them get interrupted and told that they have to follow these rules, these mandates, these regulations, these government codes. Keon Bliss is allowed to talk beyond his time. Other members are allowed to speak beyond their time. I don't hear the Vice Mayor. I don't hear Ms. Kaplan. I don't hear any of these people. Reprim-
Vice Mayor, unfortunately, if you lost your quorum, it's 9:08 p.m.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Mister City Manager, do we, do we have, do we have any expectation of any members of the council returning to the council?
Why are you cutting me off? Fuck hikes. Fuck Jews.
Madam Clerk, mute the speaker while I'm talking. Nope. Madam Clerk, we're out of a quorum, and so not expecting any council members, then we must adjourn at 9:08 p.m.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
The council is adjourned, September 12th, 2023, at 9:08 p.m.